Folks, we have a 7 o'clock start scheduled. We'll be a few minutes late. Maureen was getting things set up and has to get her box of materials. So if you'll be patient, five minutes, 10 tops.
Did you see the part that says "I'm going"?
Thank you all for being here. We'll call the meeting of the Cape Planning Board to order, May 17, 2016. We have a fairly busy agenda tonight. The items are as follows. Number one, approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Number two, the application of Cape Chiropractic and Acupuncture -- excuse me -- for a three-lot minor subdivision and two mixed-use buildings' site plan. Number three, 535 Shore Road's site plan. Michael Friedland getting a site plan review for a change of use. One item of new business, Wentworth Lodge Special Event Facility Site Plan. Other business, old business actually, at technical amendments consideration of the -- we're talking about a technical amendments package that the board's been working on for some -- quite some time, which will be discussed and then presumably tabled to a public hearing at the next meeting. And finally, there will be an opportunity for public comment at the end on anything that hasn't been on the agenda, and there will be a public comment opportunity for any item that is on the agenda. Starting off with the minutes of the last meeting, they've been circulated to your package. Any board members have questions, corrections, or additions? Entertained a motion to approve?
Moved to approve.
Approved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Passes unanimously. We will proceed next to the continued consideration of the application by Cape Chiropractic and Just by way of background, Two Penguin Properties LLC, owned by Dr. Zev and Amber Meyerwitz, are requesting minor subdivision review of a three-lot subdivision and site plan review of two buildings containing 6,205 square feet of medical office space, 10 multifamily residential units, and a 357 square foot connector located at 12 Hillway. The application will be reviewed for compliance with Section 1623 Minor Subdivision Review, Section 199 Site Plan Review, and Section 1964 Town Center Design Standards. The procedure will be as follows. We'll begin with a summary from the applicant, from their representatives, of changes made to the plans since the last meeting. There will then be an opportunity for public comment. The planning board rules provide -- permit limiting public comment to 15 minutes with a maximum of three minutes per speaker. We'll consider that when the moment comes as to whether everybody can be accommodated or not. Pardon me. At the close of public comment, the board will begin discussion, and when discussion ends, the board has the option to approve, approve with conditions, table, or deny the application. Folks from Cape Chiropractic, would you like to tell us what's new with the plan? Pardon me? Oh, right. Could you identify yourself again?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chair. Robert Frank, professional engineer, principal at WBRC Architects Engineers. With me tonight are John Kenny, also a professional engineer, civil engineer for the project. In the front row, Diane Morabito, professional engineer and traffic consultant for the project from Main Traffic Resources. In addition to our client and the applicant, Zev and Amber Meyerwitz, also Will Pogar and Jocelyn Booth, both architects with WBRC for the project as well. And we anticipate that you would like us to provide a more in-depth discussion on traffic. Would that be during this presentation, or would you like to wait until you cover the traffic portion of the review?
I think we could have the traffic after you've done the review of the changes, and then we can either have the -- I think the traffic probably before the public -- yeah, after you're done the presentation, then I think the traffic presentation will be great.
So the no change to the land subdivision, still looking at three lots. No change to the building footprint, still looking at building footprint one and two as previously stated. Will that go away? There we go. So at the last meeting, we discussed the site planting plan, and we discussed specifically the plantings and the reconfiguration of plantings on Ocean House Road. This was the sketch that was provided to you at that meeting, and as you can see here, that configuration is now part of the site planting plan. In addition, we have added three white spruce trees to provide additional buffering so that when situated exiting Rand Road, looking across at the building, it provides additional screening at the longer elevation-facing hillway. The lighting isometric is a change from the last submission packet. You'll see here that we do not cross over the internal -- the newly-created subdivision line exceeding the standard. We're now within the standard within Lot 1. It's a little hard to see on this sketch, but you'll see in the foreground -- it's actually impossible to see on the wall. I can see it on the screen here, but in the foreground, there's a line that transposes across here at about the elevation of the pointer, showing the elevation of Hillway across the frontage. Is that more visible on the black and white that was submitted with the recent middle, John?
It's very clear in the plans you submitted.
Perfect, okay. So it's a little hard to see here, or at least it is on the wall. The wall eats it up. Any other notable changes on this, Jocelyn, you'd like to cover? I will not.
So based on the feedback from the board last time, we've made a couple of changes to the elevations and the design of the building to break up the facade a little bit more, especially along Hillway. So I don't know if there's a pointer up here. So this portion here, we've actually broken up the facade and added a new dormer, which projects out from the building, both articulating that surface as well as a new ridge line to break up this portion of the building. The windows themselves, we've slightly increased in size and adjusted the spacing a little bit, again, to have less wall space on the wall and more window to make this a more pleasing view from the neighborhoods and from the road. Similarly, on the other two facades, again, just the windows growing a little bit and the spacing of them adjusting a little bit based on feedback. So we have the perspectives from before.
One of the changes on this is the more accurate representation of what is actually included in the site plan detailing as well as on the signage. And you'll see here, instead of our placeholder picket fence, you'll see the stone, dry-laid stone, with more of a cottage-style post and sign on Ocean House Road, again, responding some feedback from the board at the last meeting. And you'll see on the next slide a similar detailing on the sign as well to show how that fits in.
And this is a better view as well of that new kind of dormer that's been added to break up that facade.
Then the next slide is turning the trees back on.
It doesn't have "new."
Doesn't have the "new," yeah.
That's it?
John, were there any other noted changes you wanted to mention tonight?
No, I think that covers it.
So would it be the pleasure of the board to wait for your queue on the traffic presentation, or would you like to do that at this time?
This wraps up what you -- your --
That is a summary of the changes? That's correct.
Let me see if the board has any questions for what you've done, and then we'll turn to traffic. Board members, comments, questions for Mr. Frank?
Do we want --
John?
From the last slide that you had, the tree turned back on. Can you just -- is that the spruce tree on the added spruce trees? Are they in there?
No. Those were -- we were able to show those in the plan as an additive here. That was a change incorporated late this afternoon as a result of a conversation we had. So we do actually have updated planting plans if the board would like, or we can simply note that the -- what does that mean? That the final plan would include or would incorporate the three trees that were shown in the presentation on the final -- submit on the final record plan.
They're not reflected?
They are not in this -- no, this is an outdated slide. We did not have a chance to re-render this one.
Okay, if there are no further questions. Caroline?
Lighting on the signs. What needs to be planned to light the signs or not light the signs, whatever?
The plan is to provide lighted signs at both locations.
In what manner? Are they going to be -- the signs themselves going to be lit, or is there going to be lights on the ground focusing on the signs? What's the plan?
I believe the plan would be to -- well, it would be to meet the ordinance, the sign ordinance, for lighting. And so I believe the plan would be, at this point, to -- I don't believe the ground-mounted lighting. I think it'd be lighting on the signs or ground-mounted on the Hillway signage, but the intent is to meet the sign ordinance illumination standards on that.
Okay.
Okay, if there are no further questions, we'll hear from the traffic study consultant, and then we'll proceed to the public comment.
I'm Diane Morabito, president of Main Traffic Resources. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Maine and also in New Hampshire, and I'm also a professional traffic operations engineer. I have over 30 years of experience, and I've done hundreds and hundreds of traffic impact studies. We begin a traffic impact study by looking at the number of trips that a project will generate. In this case, we have 14 one-way trips during the AM peak hour and 25 one-way trips of the PM peak hour. So during the morning peak hour, we have eight trips going in and six trips coming out. During the PM peak hour, we have 11 trips entering and 14 trips coming out. This level of traffic typically is not expected to have any significant impact off-site on traffic operations. Generally, you need to have at least 25 trips in a lane in an hour to have an impact off-site on traffic operations, and this project will have a maximum of 14, probably more like 11, lane-hour trips. Given this minimal traffic level, the study area we would typically use would just be looking at the site drives to make sure that they would operate acceptably. In this case, we extended the study area to include the intersection of Hillway and Ocean House Road because we knew that was of concern, and we wanted to make sure that operations were acceptable there as well. We performed traffic counts at the intersection of Hillway and Ocean House Road. These counts were then factored to peak summer conditions using DOT seasonal factors. These factors are based upon or developed from locations where they count 24 hours a day through 965 days a year. And in this case, because we have a lot of school trips in those numbers on Hillway, we're actually overinflating our traffic volumes because we basically increased all of our traffic volumes by 22% to get to peak summer conditions, when in actuality, the school trips will be decreasing and summer not increasing. So that's how we got to our volumes. Traffic operations are evaluated in terms of level of service. The levels range from A to F, much like a report card, with A being free flow and little or no delay. E is typically the capacity of a facility, and you get pretty long delays. And then F is considered overcapacity with extreme delays. What we found in the traffic analysis was that Hillway, approached to Ocean House Road, now operates at level of service D in the AM peak hour period and at level of service C during the PM peak hour period, and that would be under peak summer conditions. And these same levels of service are expected in 2017 with the development fully occupied and also allowing for 2% annual traffic growth. And we actually found that there's been no traffic growth out there, but we inflated the volumes by 2%. And it's important to note that the analysis showed a really minor increase in delay between the no-build conditions and the build conditions. We were looking at less than two seconds increase in delay at that intersection due to the project, which again shows you that the project really doesn't have much of an impact off-site. Analysis of the site drives showed that they'll operate at a high-level service A during both peak hour periods, so there are no concerns there for vehicles exiting the site. In terms of safety, there are two measures that Main DOT uses to determine high-crash locations. The first is a critical rate factor. If you have a critical rate factor greater than one, it means that you basically have a location with a higher-than-expected accident rate. The second criterion that we use is the number of accidents that occur. You have to have eight or more accidents at a location over a three-year period for it to be considered a high-crash location. We obtained accident data from DOT for Hillway, Ocean House Road, all within the vicinity of the site, and we had no high-crash locations. However, the intersection of Ocean House Road and Scott Dyer is approaching the high-crash criteria. It has a critical rate factor greater than one, but it had six accidents instead of eight. What we typically do for a high-crash location is we prepare a collision diagram and evaluate it to see if there's any accident patterns or trends that would show a problem or particular problem. And we did that for this intersection even though it wasn't high-crash because it was approaching the high-crash criteria, and there were no patterns or trends evident that would indicate a correctable safety pattern. And since it's non-high-crash location and since it's already equipped with a flashing beacon, we didn't recommend any other actions. The other safety factor that we need to consider is site distance from the driveways. Basically, we evaluated both driveways, and with some clearing along the frontage, site distance will exceed standards. We do recommend that a 25 mile-per-hour speed limit sign be placed at the beginning of Hillway. That is the speed limit on Hillway, and it's posted in the opposite direction, but it's not posted in this direction, hopefully to slow traffic down coming from Ocean House Road. So we do recommend that a speed limit sign be installed there just to reinforce the fact that Hillway is only 25 miles per hour. The last item we looked at in this study was pedestrian circulation and safety, and we had one recommendation in this regard. Basically, currently, right now, the crosswalk at Ocean House Road across Hillway is angled, and it's also somewhat removed from the intersection, so it doesn't provide good visibility for people turning from Ocean House Road to people on that crosswalk. It also puts people between -- if there are two vehicles on the approach, somebody would have to walk between them, so we're recommending that that be squared up and placed at the intersection. That's the best for pedestrian safety. And I also understand that there were some questions as to why the accesses are on the side street, why they're on Hillway and not on Ocean House Road, and this is done for access management purposes. Access management locates drives on the minor side street and not on the main line for two primary reasons. The first is for capacity reasons. At every location where you have a site drive, it's a potential location where traffic has to slow for either entering or exiting vehicles. By not having it on your main line, you're reserving the capacity of the main line of the major street. And the second reason is that every driveway is a potential conflict point, and therefore, if you have them on the side street with lesser volumes, you're much less to have conflicts or problems because you're -- they're having to exit onto a much lesser-volume street. So that's the principles of access management, and that's why we would always recommend that the site drives be on the minor side street. And that pretty much summarizes the full traffic study. I can take questions, or we can --
Thank you. Joe?
Yeah, weren't there also issues with sightlines on configuring an entrance off of Old Ocean House Road?
I did not look at that. The plan came to me with both entrances and exits on Hillway, so I did not evaluate site distances from Ocean House Road. I expect that they're not great because I think there is a curve there, but I didn't evaluate it personally. The plan came to me as I would want to see it as a traffic engineer with the access points on the side street.
I think I mentioned before, I'm not a traffic engineer, but we did look at the -- in one of the earlier concepts, we looked at an entrance onto Ocean House Road. Given how we had to sort of level up the site, although it may not look it today as you drive by, it looks like it's a fairly gentle approach. Again, you can see that, given the 10 or 11-foot differences we had on finished floors that hit that upper floor, we found we were faced with about a 12-foot grade change from the driveway down to Ocean House Road in a fairly short distance. I think we had either an 8 or maybe a 12% slope on the driveway. And the concern I had, again, only really from 30 years of experience getting feedback from traffic engineers, is we looked at the exiting site distance, it looked like it was onto Ocean House Road with a higher speed limit. It was problematic on that curve. So we abandoned the driveway at that location, and that was not provided.
Any further questions now for the traffic consultant? We can call you folks later when we get into the board discussion. Okay, we will now have the public comment period. And could I have a show of hands of people who would like to be heard from the public? Yes, sir, we have one. Okay, well, then I think our 15 minutes and three minutes ahead will be more than sufficient. Please, if you'd give your name and address and --
Once again, I'm Steve Bates for Rand Road. First of all, I'd like to congratulate the team. It appears that collectively, everybody is trying to listen and accommodate. I only have one or two quick points. In previous email or conversation, my understanding the signage was not to be lighted at all. What I think I'm hearing tonight is there are two signs, one on Old Ocean House and one on Hillway. If that, in fact, is the case, I would appeal to the board to approve lighting only on the Ocean House side and not on the Hillway sign. I appreciated hearing three white spruce. That was a suggestion that came up because deciduous trees take care of six months but not 12 months. I'm not sure if three is enough to provide a buffer, and I am not in the tree business, but if you're talking small trees growing over the next 20 years, that, in my opinion, is not a buffer. So I don't know whether more spruces of a taller nature could be planted in that location. And I think that covers it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Any other members of the public who'd like to be heard? Yes, sir.
Thank you for my last change of -- my last-minute change of heart. I'm Chris Newell, 9 Rand Road, and I hope that you all received an email that I sent recently confirming my comments from the last meeting, and Steve's comments just now come back to this. What I pointed out in my last comments were the noise potential to -- we know there's a town ordinance on noise. There is a dumpster on the site, and so we look forward to that being picked up after 7:00 in the morning, which I understand to be the time that it's allowed and not 6:00 a.m. and 5:00 a.m., which is what happens at Sea Salt now. I'm a runner. I'm out at that hour. I know it happens. Also talked about the visual pollution that might come from people storing things out on their deck, and you spoke to the applicants about addressing that. And I think Steve's point just now, a lighted sign -- I don't know what the ordinance is. I'd be happy to come down and speak to Maureen and find out what that is, but the idea of a lighted sign versus a lit sign. A lit sign with ground light seems appropriate. Something that is lit up doesn't seem appropriate and would contribute to light pollution, which I'd also mentioned from the number of lights on the building, the number of lights in the parking lot, the number of lights from these windows. So as good neighbors, I hope the Meyerwitz will take that into consideration. They will be our neighbors now, and we look forward to what we think has been a better process, as I've only gotten involved in this recently. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are other members of the public who want to be heard, we will close the public comment section and proceed to the board comment. I think the two sort of major areas are traffic and landscaping, although we can discuss every item in the criteria for approval. The -- I guess I'd like to suggest we talk about landscaping first. Ideas, comments, questions from board members? Elaine?
Could we see the new plan?
Could you walk us through, I guess it was option one, up in the Ocean House perspective that you adjusted with the wall and some ornamental plantings and the like, sort of describe what it is now versus what it was previously?
I did look up on the planning table, the three white spruce are seven -- 67-foot tall and burlap, fairly typical height that we would recommend, and given maybe a first year growth of six inches to a foot -- And given a, maybe a first year growth of six inches to a foot and as much as two feet or more, those will grow fairly quickly into a manageable size. They'll have to actually be managed at some point where they'll really fill that in 100%. So there, thank you, John. So the plantings that were illustrated in option one are now included, both in the plan and with the key. And you can see those in, at the point where the walkway meets the sidewalk within Ocean House Road right of way.
Yeah, John?
One question I have, when we went on the sidewalk, we went out to 77 and saw that there was some ledge out there, did we move the entrance to the sidewalk?
That's correct. Yep, originally it was closer to here, John, is that right?
Correct.
And it came in straight in here. We actually, originally we slid it down here, but we moved it down even a little further to avoid hitting this drip edge of this tree here. So that's why it did move down a little further than we thought we'd have to on site.
These are crabapple ornamental trees. Do I read the key correctly?
Yes.
And the new ornamental arrangement for the, for the walkway?
That's correct.
I'd also like to thank you for the putting in of these three white pines. I think that will be a big help breaking the line as you look at this place from Rand Road. Other questions from the board?
Just for clarification, is it a stone wall instead of a big fence?
That's correct. It's, that's right, it's a landscape architect. And looking at that reconfigured planting, we opted for something that was a little more natural with the dry laid stone that would actually help with the sign out there now forms a little bit more of a border for the plantings behind it as well as a backdrop for the entrance to the sidewalk.
Were there any changes to the planting on the northerly part of the property from the, right by the parking lot there? Is that as it was previously?
John, along the, oops, there we go. How do I move the? Zoom out.
I'm not saying I expected, I just?
Yep. John, what were the changes along, just the removal of the fence over here? How can I zoom?
The northerly part?
Yeah, you come in the driveway and on your left, there's, there's a bunch of plantings which-
Over in this area?
Were intended to buffer the parking from the-
From Hillway?
Approach from the north?
Those are the same as the last?
Yes, that's all the same.
Planting?
The changes were just in this front, along Ocean House.
And the elimination of the fence over here.
Right, yeah.
Question?
A little blurry.
And this, everybody good? Okay. Any questions on the traffic study and for our traffic engineer? I had one, maybe I'm just asking you to repeat what you've already said, but the, the factors that weigh against having this property exit and enter from Route 77? Could you just?
The factors?
Yeah, I mean, what factors is a matter of good traffic management planning would indicate accessing from the side roads rather than from the main, main drag?
It's both for capacity reasons, because it preserves the capacity of the main line, the busier street. And it's for safety reasons, because each point is a conflict point, and you're going to have less conflicts on a road with lesser volumes having a driveway there than you would have on the busier main line. Those are the two reasons.
So you see nothing exceptional about accessing the property from the rear, in effect, as opposed to the front on the, on a higher speed?
No, I mean, that's recommended. Even DOT has what's called double frontage standards. If you have a property with two frontages, your access shall be from the minor side street. I mean, that's just the standard, and that's the approach we use. It's just a better, better traffic flow perspective and safer.
Elaine?
Can you repeat what you said your conclusions were about the crosswalk and the speed limit sign and whether the applicant is proposing to address those?
We're recommending a speed limit sign for traffic coming from Ocean House Road turning onto Hillway because there is none there now. The speed limit is technically 25, but there's no speed limit sign there.
On Hillway?
On Hillway.
Okay, and what about the crosswalk you talked about?
The crosswalk right now is angled, and it's also removed from Ocean House Road. So it's skewed and at an angle. I actually have, I don't think, no, you don't have it with me. It's down there. A picture that I could show you, but it's because of that. You have it?
There's a laser pointer up on the-
You almost have it.
On the podium right there, there's a laser pointer, if you need it.
I know, I just tried to change pages and I zoomed out.
Yeah, okay, actually, yeah, you can see it right there in the site plan. You can see how it's angled away from the intersection. And it's also, so it's right here. And what we would recommend is that it be straight like this for two reasons. Right now, anybody who's exiting, if there's two cars lined up, that pedestrian has to walk between vehicles. And then it also, for the vehicles that are turning, which the vast majority turns onto Hillway or right turns, and if those vehicles are coming faster around that corner, they're not seeing that pedestrian with much advance notice because they're making the corner before they can see them. My understanding is that, I think the town is rebuilding Hillway, so it'd be a good time to re-stripe that and correct that deficiency at that point. In terms of the speed limit sign, I'm sure that the project could take care of that for the town if, if they wanted to.
Maureen has some additions.
So, you know, as we said at the last meeting, the safety, Hillway's safety improvements are on the town council goals for this year. And we talked about it at the last meeting. I spoke with the Public Works Director, who is going to be leading up that effort once there's funding approved by the council. And I believe they have a meeting Thursday to vote on the budget that might include that funding. We had a specific conversation about the crosswalk, and I expressed my concerns. And he was absolutely 100% on board with making that intersection a right angled intersection, totally redoing that crosswalk so it is a much safer area. So it's, it's high on the to-do list.
Okay, and my understanding is that both of these issues, the crosswalk and the speed limit sign, really are current issues. And this project doesn't, certainly doesn't improve the situation, but doesn't aggravate it in any significant extent.
That's correct. Yeah, it's just, it's, it's a deficiency that I see that I recommend be improved because it's, it's really not a safe pedestrian crossing. It would be much safer if it was squared up and aligned with Ocean House Road.
And Maureen, does this traffic study recommendation somehow get transferred or passed on to whoever it is that's doing this analysis on behalf of the town?
The Public Works Director gets his own set of the planning board plans, so he has this, all of this work already. It's just that I can't, I can't commit to anything because the actual scope of work for what's going to happen to Hillway has not been created yet. But the good thing is that because we have this information and we have input, you know, there's a good chance this is going to be included in the scope.
Okay. And the other question is, did you take a look at the crosswalk across Scott Dyer Road?
I did not as part of this study, but it was mentioned to me that it was a potential concern. So I did look at it today, just on Google Earth. Again, similarly, it is also slightly angled, and it's a shorter pedestrian crossing, and you expose the pedestrian left, less if it's perpendicular. So I would recommend straightening that out. And it's also slightly removed from Hillway. It's a little bit further away from the intersection. Ideally, it should be closer. So maybe also as part of Hillway improvements, I could also correct that and make it a little bit better.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Henry?
I know there's not a, very much of an increase in the traffic. And I noticed that there are two, two vehicle entrances and exits. Did you, in your study, consider making one an entrance and one an exit? And would it be any advantage, you think, if you did that?
I didn't consider it. They were far enough apart, and the volumes on Hillway are not that great. Sometimes you'll consider that for really high-volume drive like gas stations and things on a busier road. But because we basically put in our analysis all exits at one location and had a level of service A, so dispersing them amongst two locations, it's even better. So I wasn't really concerned with it.
The only reason I ask that is I noticed it's on a hill. And in the winter, I guess, there's a bit of slippage going on. So turning left or right might be problematical, and it would be.
Yeah, I mean, having two access points might help if there was a situation with a particular drive at any point in time, they could go the other way, but.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome.
Okay, moving on. There was some discussion, Joe, this is probably more of interest to you, on the siding samples. There was a typo, I gather, in the plans, which talked about plywood siding, which I'm told was not intended. Could you brief us on what your, on what your plans are for the siding?
All over siding on plywood, and very strong, same ones. But again, so we are, again, too complicated with both the breakery and the, both the five-inch exposure, woven corners, and the options down here.
The polymer, could you just describe what that is?
It's a, it's advanced.
Could you go to the microphone, please, so that people watching at home can hear you?
Yeah. So it's a, it's a synthetic siding. It's injection molded, I believe, so it has a texture. It's more durable than wood. It comes totally impregnated with the color, so there's no scratches or anything to damage it. It has a very long lifetime on it. And the other option that we're looking at is wood siding in the same colors.
It has a shingle appearance, right?
Yes, and so I have- They would both have a five-inch exposure, they would both have fully woven corners.
So from any distance, this is pretty convincing, correct?
Yes. There's less maintenance issues.
Joe, are you, any questions on that, or? Jonathan?
I think there's any changes to the existing structure or anything else there?
Not as part of this project.
Can I, can I just go say one thing about the siding real quick? So I guess the quest, I guess the question is, are we happy with vinyl versus wood? To me, that's actually quite an acceptable, has an acceptable appearance. I don't know how you guys feel looking at it.
This is a heavy, heavy grade vinyl, right? I mean, this is?
Yes. Yeah, it's a premium product, it's a-
It ain't that cheap.
It's not.
For purposes of disclosure, that's what I have in my house, so I couldn't vote against it.
I think it's fairly common.
Actually, I think it's better because shingles tend to curl up a little bit at the edge. And I guess those won't.
It looks like you have some roofing material there. Can you talk about that a little bit?
So it's a, it's an architectural roofing. Will, you can talk more about the specifics.
So there's quite a variety of color on that board. What are you thinking about?
The color that we're proposing is the weathered wood color down at the bottom, which all of these are. There are slight variations in the tiles themselves to give it a more authentic look, so it's not just one solid color, so that's on purpose. You can ignore these top ones there, it's just these lower.
Any other questions from the board for the applicant on any topic that we've talked about from day one?
I did not hear you, Peter.
I'm sorry. Do you have any questions or comments on any aspect of the application?
I do.
Okay, Carolyn?
I am also concerned about the sign lighting. And I want, I hope, and based on what you've done with the rest of the project, I'm sure you will take into consideration how light on the sign on Hillway could impact the neighborhood across the street and make it as subtle as possible. I don't remember hearing light, lights talked about in relationship to the sign previous to tonight. So I just want to make that statement, and I hope you'll consider that.
Maureen?
I'd actually recommend to the board that, I don't believe lighting is shown right now on the plan for the, for the signs. And so I would suggest that the board think about a couple of options. That, in my opinion, if you approve the plans as they were submitted, the applicant would not be able to put lighting on their signs unless they came back to the planning board for an amendment. Another alternative would be to consider a motion for approval with the condition that any lighting of the sign be ground-mounted and not exceed .5-foot candles at the property line, which would give the applicant time to add lighting to the plan and still meet the site plan standard.
So ground mounted?
Delegate to the plan.
Ground mounted, on the ground, pointing up?
That's what I heard the applicant say, that they, and I, you know-
Versus a sign mounted, shooting down?
Honestly, I think, I mean, the history of the town is, ground-mounted, people can live with. Hooked over, people can live with. Interior lit sign is what really irritates people.
I don't, you're not proposing an interior lit sign, neon or?
No, that's, that's correct. It wouldn't be an interior lit sign, it would be the ground-mounted or, or from above. I, I believe the intent was just to meet the sign ordinance, which specifically lays out, you know, that the light source shall be shielded to prevent glare onto public ways or private properties. So when that is, you know, when that is put into place, it'll meet that illumination standard in the sign ordinance is what the intent was.
Yeah, Maureen?
John, you're, you're not just going to be asking for a sign permit. You, you also have a site plan approval that regulates the property. And the site plan approval has a specific lighting standard that restricts lighting to no more than .5-foot candles at the property line. So if you were someone who did not have a site plan approval and you were just coming into the office to get a sign permit, that standard would apply. And if you have a site plan approval, you have to meet the site plan standard and that standard. And I would argue that the site plan standard of .5-foot candles is more specific than that one.
Correct, yeah, okay.
You're proposing that the condition of the approval will be that any lighting of the Hillway sign have a .5 impact at the property line? End of story, or you?
I, well, I mean, it's up to the, it really is up to the board. You, you could either approve the plans the way they are, which will make the applicant have to come back with more specifics on the lighting. Or you could give them a little bit more room. And I would honestly suggest that you say either ground-mounted or overhead lit signage with .5-foot candles limitation, you can make that a condition. If, if you just say .5-foot candles and you don't specify the type of lighting, you could end up with an- end up with an interior-lit sign, which frankly, you know, someone can present that. If it meets the standards, they can get it approved. But the experience of the town has been that that is the type of sign that tends to be the most aggravating for butters.
Well, the previous rendition makes sense to me, anyway, that they either ground or overhead with a .5...
So we can just add that to a condition of approval?
As a condition, right. I don't see delaying the vote on the, this is a fairly dinky sign on the Hillway side, isn't it?
I, you know, if you didn't approve it tonight and they had to come back, they would basically have to do exactly what the condition of approval we're talking about says. So, you know, there's been a lot of effort tonight, it's up to you to decide if you're comfortable. I think the applicants, if I'm allowed to say, have worked diligently to meet the .5-foot candle level and probably are really good at it now.
Yes, and we do, as you point out, we do indicate on the layout plan that the sign is lit in the fashion. We did not include the ISO. In fact, we would be glad to provide with the, with the sign documentation when we get ready for construction permitting, an ISO that actually supports that, if, so it can get in the record if you so desire, as a condition of approval. That would be something that would be easy to do, probably tomorrow.
Is the board okay with that approach?
I'm fine with it being a condition of approval.
Yeah, condition of approval makes everybody satisfied today?
Yes.
Yep, you're on.
Is it green in the bottom, John? Is it this one here? Or is it already open? Did you want Ocean House, I'm sorry?
Is it one that goes sort of more up in Ocean House Road?
No, elevation trail.
Okay, there was one that you showed that sort of, yeah, so is the, are the doors repeat a sort of orange color?
At this point, we don't know what the orange color is.
All right, so this is...
We have your word on that one, yes.
But before we... I was going to suggest a match sort of formula of color on the actual sign. I think there was the other picture too.
It was a president style, would you do something that would be provoking a wood finish, right? Yeah, but not orange. Quite a bit. Thank you.
Other observations? The gentleman who spoke second did raise the point of sort of the, I don't know, the cultural impact of the multi-family residences above with respect to noise, light. I believe when you last spoke, you were talking about stuff being stored out on the decks and the like, and whether anything could be done in that. I'm not aware that we have a, some town standard on tenant leases requiring people to act like good tenants. But at the same time, because it is a somewhat new feature in town to have more extensive multi-family properties, I'm, it seems to me some mention of that might not be a bad idea, simply that the tenant leases would regulate in a commercially regional fashion, you know, the storage of equipment, noise, et cetera, et cetera. I don't know if the applicant has any strong feelings about that. You'll be a resident there, so you may have some thoughts, because I'm...
So I think as, this is one of those topics where, as you said, there's no real clear ordinance on it. I think this is where us as the owners of the project and the abutting neighbors have to have a small step of good faith with each other. As multi-units that are going to be on the higher end, it's in our best interest to make sure that we maintain a property that projects a very high standard of living, very clean. And so I think this is, rather than try to get into a tit-for-tat for light pollution, because if we try going down that road, then it would be expected that we would have some kind of expectation from the abutting neighbors for light pollution to our tenants. And I think we're going down a road that is, rather than going against each other and coming from a negative perspective, I think it's important that we just have a small step of good faith. I think so far, all of our people have done an excellent job of being very amicable and working together and trying to meet all the, not just the specific letter criteria for the submission, but also the feel from the surrounding neighbors. So, you know, it's not in our interest to have tenants or leases that have language that degrades the appearance of the building. And I think, rather than have something specific as part of the planning board, I think this just requires a little bit of good faith on both parties.
Maureen, you?
Yeah, as a landlord myself, do you have any sort of expectation of what you will allow on the balconies? For example, a deck chair or table, or, I mean, or a barbecue? So there's acceptable furniture on the balcony or non-acceptable, like laundry drying units which look, which can look bad, or bird cages or something like...
Sure, you know, I think a good standard would be the existing mixed-use facility that we currently occupy at Two Davis Point Lane. Right now, it's perfectly acceptable for there to be, like, lawn chair furniture for people to sit out, a small table to have their coffee to enjoy at. A tenant does have a grill, you know, and I think it's fair for people who are paying a high rent to occupy those facilities to be able to invite guests into their home and possibly entertain on that balcony. I think general storage for, like, cardboard boxes, you know, or things that really aren't relegated to be on the deck, I think that would be inappropriate, and we would have to have something, you know, we're going to protect ourselves and make sure that doesn't happen. And, you know, beyond that, I think we're on the same page. You know, we currently occupy a unit that's, you know, in the same standard, and I, we intend on carrying those through.
Yeah, I take your point on, you know, you have an interest in making sure it's nicely done, although the, somehow the rental level of the apartments doesn't seem to be determinative. I mean, we, you may, if we're talking about a precedent here for future multi-family, should they show up, I think we want a sort of a uniform point of view on what might at least be not allowed, not necessarily what has to be, you know, addressed specifically. And I, the light and the noise, I think, is simply is going to be what it is, and I don't see that as being regulated. The only point that made a little bit of sense to me was the idea of not using the external porches for storage of, other than, you know, normal deck furniture.
Right, I think a simple statement would be to say it's not our intent to have the decks utilized as attic space. You know, I think that's kind of the precedent that we're setting forward, because, you know, if we start trying to have language on what is allowed and what's not allowed, we're creating a double standard where we're in a restricted style of living, you know, where our tenants are looking across the street and we have abutting neighbors that they might be leaving their lawnmower out, or they have some junk from fixing their car that's on the lawn, and they're creating noise pollution for us, or light pollution for us. And so, you know, again, I think, I think we're, everyone's on the same page with this. We have no intention of allowing clutter to amount, we have no intention of allowing things that wouldn't be appropriately stored on the deck space. But again, you know, I think this is where the board should just allow us to be, you know, as good business owners in managing the property.
Your point's valid, that every other property owner can do what they want, you know, without restriction, and this is treating your situation somewhat differently. Board members have any thoughts on this one?
Yeah, I guess I would just ask, Maureen, if there's any basis in our ordinances for us to impose restrictions on uses of balconies beyond the light and noise restrictions that are there. This seems to me, although a nice thing to do for a neighborhood, to be beyond our jurisdiction.
I believe you're correct.
Okay. So I'm not inclined to impose that.
I sure you're good. Other, John? Other comments on this one?
Yeah, I have...
I'm with him.
Yep, also, Joe?
I have one more question. There was an email that asked about if there were any mechanical units located on the site anywhere. I took a quick look through the plans, I didn't see them indicated.
Any mechanical units?
Yeah.
At this point, the mechanical design...
At this point in the process, the mechanical design has not begun. If there were anything that would be stored, it would be what you typically find in a house, a small condenser unit that would be...
Half the size of this, about that high.
Per, you know, again, we are not really sure what we're going to do for heating and cooling, or if even there is cooling that is required by the owners. So I can't really answer with definitiveness what there would be. I don't know what your suggestion would be to manage that.
Well, I think the concern was that, and in the email, it sounded like the concern was that all of a sudden there could be a big condenser unit somewhere.
I don't think that, we're not intending to do that.
I think, I mean, everyone needs to be aware that, and the board has seen some site plan amendments that have come before you, because someone has needed to pour a new pad for a new generator, and our code enforcement officer has determined that that was not on a site plan and therefore triggered an amendment. So just everybody be aware that depending on where you end up putting these things, it could end up triggering, coming back to the board.
Okay, but I, for the aesthetic of the property, I would like to say that we would not be providing a large central unit if you're thinking about some mechanical behemoth on site, and that that would not be the intent. So if there is a pad, it will be a small pad or pads required, but they will be tastefully hidden.
You've got a lot of plans to hide in back.
Okay, if there are no more points of specific discussion, does any board member want to express a general point of view on the application, or shall we go on to considering about... Down here? Oh, okay, I would just like to say, I'm really impressed by the work that went into the landscaping and buffering that you folks have done. I think you took seriously the comments of the neighborhood, and I think you've come up with a very attractive plan, and with a few years' growth of all the new shrubbery, I think the neighborhood's going to be quite happy with the, with the appearance. At least, that's my hope. We have, Maureen has changed the...
Expanded.
Sorry?
Expanded.
Expanded. The vote is actually, now goes sort of letter by letter down the criteria, the submission standards. And the purpose for this, and we, the first time we did it recently, was on the antenna tower vote last time. It's really just to make it very clear on any project that's had its own level of controversy, that the various factors have indeed been considered by the board, and the court wouldn't have to infer that we consider them. So for that reason, we've, in the right case, we've taken to this laborious process of reading the many, many elements of the approval. If there are no further comments, does somebody want to... Well, first of all, is there...
Like we did last time?
Like we did last time, yeah. I mean, I am of the mind to vote in favor of the application as we're going to do it. Does anybody have a contrary view that would like to be heard?
Are we going to start going down?
Yeah.
Are we going to start going down these...
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Is that where we're...
The numbers are, they're short, but we've just sort of bounced one at a time.
Yep.
And I believe they begin at the bottom of page nine, and you're...
Well, they actually begin on the, on page 10. Findings of fact. Two Penguins Property LLC owned by Dr. Zev and Amber Meyerwitz are requesting minor subdivision review.
Carolyn, hang on, have a second?
We need a motion?
This is the motion.
This, she is, she's making the motion.
Usually you start with the findings of fact.
Okay.
If you're going to consider a final motion for approval or denial.
Right, and Carolyn?
The motion is on page 12, and you've got to make it all the way through the findings of fact.
But your findings of fact is actually right at the very bottom of page nine.
Yeah, it says findings of fact.
Yeah.
Yes, the first one is on page 10.
Right.
Okay, I'm there.
You're off and running.
Two Penguin Properties LLC owned by Dr. Zev and Amber Meyerwitz are requesting minor subdivision review of a three-lot subdivision and site plan review of two buildings containing 6,205 square feet of medical office space, 10 multi-family residential units, and a 357-square-foot building connector located at 12 Hillway, which requires review for compliance with section 16-2-3, minor subdivision review, section 19-9, site plan review, and section 19-6-4, Town Center Design Standards.
Two, the subdivision will not result in undue water pollution. The subdivision is not located in the 100-year floodplain. Soils will support the proposed uses. The slope of the land, proximity to streams, and state and local water resource rules and regulations will not be compromised by the project.
One more.
We'll catch it up, it's all right. The subdivision will have a sufficient quantity, quantity of potable water.
Drew, number four?
The subdivision will not cause soil erosion based on the erosion control plan provided.
The subdivision will not cause unreasonable rodents or congestion for unsafe particular pedestrian traffic. All walks are provided with particular access.
The subdivision will provide for adequate sewage disposal.
The subdivision will provide for adequate solid waste disposal.
The subdivision will not have undue adverse impact on scenic or natural areas, historic sites, significant wildlife habitat, rare natural, natural areas, and is not adjacent to a public access shoreline.
The subdivision is compatible with applicable provisions of the comprehensive plan and town ordinances.
Yeah, it has demonstrated adequate technical financial capabilities to link the program.
The subdivision will not adversely impact surface water quality.
The subdivision will not adversely impact the quality or quantity of groundwater.
The subdivision is not located in a floodplain.
The land of the subdivision does not include wetlands.
The subdivision will provide adequate stormwater handling.
The subdivision is not in the Great Pond watershed.
The subdivision is not located in more than one municipality.
The subdivision is not located on land where liquidation harvesting has, was conducted.
The subdivision does provide for access to direct sunlight.
The subdivision does provide vegetation buffer and around subdivision and streaming as needed.
Number 21, the subdivision will comply with the open space impact fee with a payment of $13,400...
of $13,485.
The subdivision lots will be provided with access to utilities.
The subdivision will not be phased.
The plan for the development reflects the natural capabilities of the site to support development.
Access to the development will be on roads with adequate capacity to support the traffic generated by the development. Access into and within the site will, as you said, parking will be provided in accordance with Section 19-7-8, off-street parking.
Number 26, the plan does provide a system of pedestrian ways within the development.
You do it? Yeah.
Number 27, the development, I got to, I got to read it first here. The development will locate, will not locate, store, or discharge materials harmful to the surface or groundwaters.
The development will provide for adequate exterior lighting without excessive illumination.
Number 29, the development will not substantially increase noise levels and cause human discomfort.
Storage of exterior materials and vehicles that may be visible to the public will be screened by fencing or fencing.
The town engineer has recommended revisions to the plan. Number 32, the planning board finds in accordance with Section 16-3-2A3 that no sidewalk is required on the Scott Dyer Road frontage of Lot 3.
33, cross easements between Lots 1, 2, and 3 will be needed.
34, lighting on the site should be adequate to move safely around the site, but also not exceed .5-foot candles at the property line to minimize impact on abutting and nearby properties.
35, the building footprints are compatible with the Town Center Design Standards.
Number 36, the proposed buildings are compatible in scale with other structures in the Town Center District. Number 37, the roofs of the proposed buildings are compatible with the roofs of nearby buildings in the Town Center and to the design of the structure.
38, the primary orientation of the building is towards the street.
Number 39, the building openings are compatible with the rhythm of openings in nearby structures and consistent with the style of the building. The first-floor facade is constructed with an equal proportion of openings to wall space.
Forty, buildings, exterior materials are compatible with nearby buildings and the design of the buildings.
41, the site landscaping and buffering are compatible with the adjacent uses and the Town Center. The front yard is designed to be pedestrian-friendly in scale, access, lighting, and security. Number 42, the application substantially complies with the, with Section 16-2-3, minor subdivision review, Section 19-9, site plan review, and Section 19-6-4, Town Center Design Standards.
I had a call for a second and a vote on those findings of fact, and then we'll go on to the order.
Second.
Somebody's motion, second by Henry. Thank you. Who's next?
Those are all the findings.
Do you want me to do the bead audit, because that's what's next?
Oh, all in favor? Good point. Opposed? Carrie unanimously, thank you.
You want me to go?
Sure.
I'll do if you want. Who wants to do?
All ready to roll.
Bead ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of Two Penguin Properties LLC for minor subdivision review of a three-lot subdivision and site plan review of two buildings containing 6,205 square feet of medical office space, 10 multifamily residential units, and a 357-square-foot building connector located at 12 Hillway be approved subject to the following conditions.
One...
Oh, sorry, I thought we were, carry on.
Do you want me to do?
Sure, why don't you do the whole thing?
One, the plans be revised to address the comments of the town engineer in his letter dated May 11, 2016. Two, the deeds be prepared in a form acceptable to the town attorney for sewer easement to benefit Lot 1 and 2, and a parking easement on Lot 2 to benefit Lot 1, and an access easement to benefit Lot 2 over Lot 1 to access the parking lot, and that the deeds be signed by the applicant and recorded with the subdivision plan. Three, the applicant will pay an open space impact fee of $13,458 prior to the issuance of a building permit for any lot in the subdivision. Four, the lighting plan be revised so that no lighting exceeds .5-foot candles at the property line, and I would like to insert a six about the, the lighting, sign lighting, but I don't have good wording for it. But, oh, Elaine does. Any lighting on property signs be ground-based or...
Downlighting.
Downlighting on the top of the sign.
No, no.
No, no interior lit sign. Okay? Acceptable? So that would be number five. Number six, the plan be revised to show the location of any proposed generator and that information demonstrating that decibel levels will not exceed the site plan standards at the property line. Seven, the exterior material notes on the elevation, elevations delete the option of installing plywood as an exterior material. Eight, that there be no recording of a subdivision plan issuance of a building permit or alteration of the site until the plans have been revised to address the above conditions and submitted to the town planner. And nine, that there be no issuance of a building permit nor alteration of the site until a performance guarantee has been provided to the town in an amount approved by the town engineer, a form approved by the town attorney, and all approved by the town manager.
We have that motion by Carolyn. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Carrie unanimously? Thank you.
Mr. Chair, quick question on the three-lot subdivision. It's my understanding that to be recorded, we would need to prepare a Mylar for you, and that that would have to...
Why don't you just call me tomorrow?
Call you tomorrow. Sounds great.
If you can leave something, that would be, if you could leave the polymer siding, I think that's a big issue.
We can bring water.
If you folks who are leaving would be kind enough to move on out of the building so that we can continue our hearing?
All right, Jim, we have a couple of minutes.
Is it?
We have a couple of minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll take it. I got one of these in my...
Henry is...
Take your time.
Okay, okay. Just a little... Okay, the next...
Yeah, go right to those little doors.
Henry will get started without you, is that all right? Next item is 535 Shore Road Site Plan. Michael Friedland is requesting site plan review for 2,380 square feet of retail space located in the... I have the wrong piece of paper. I'm going to go from the, actually, the cover. The building includes retail on the first floor and multifamily unit in the second floor. The building predate site plan review. The applicant would like to operate an office on the first floor, which is the change of use triggering site plan review because no site plan has been approved for the site. And in order to maximize his options, Mr. Friedland is asking for the approval of a Category 3 Village Retail Shop. See, the zoning ordinance, BA District, Section 10-6-5F. If he obtains this approval, he can operate a Category 3 or 2 use without further review as long as there are no exterior changes. The application will be reviewed for compliance with Section 19-9, site plan review. We'll begin by having the applicant introduce the project. The board will then consider whether the application is complete. If the application is considered complete, then a public hearing has been advertised for this meeting. The public will have a chance to be heard. The board will then discuss the application, and at the close of the discussion, the board has the option to approve, approve with conditions, deny, or table the application. The first order of business is your introduction, and then the board will consider completeness.
Hi, I'm Mike Friedland. I own 535 Shore Road, and as, as you noted, the purpose of this is for the site plan is because I was planning on changing the use of the commercial space from retail to office, and since there's no site plan on file, I was required to submit a site plan. And I'm applying for retail just because there's more flexibility within the ordinance, whereas if, if I have retail, I could have office, but if I have office, I can't revert back to retail. So that's the purpose of the retail application. And I'm not planning on making any changes to the building. And from last time, the major sticking point was the parking. And my numbers were off for the square footage for the office space, so the amended, so the, the new square footage I got was based on the, the, what the Town of Cape has on record for the square footage for the property. And should I go over my amended parking plan now, or should I lead up to it, or?
Well, you should cover that topic, and if there's anything else you'd like to discuss leading up to it, you know. So, you?
Probably not. It's very, it's, I'm, I'm really, it's going to be pretty non-invasive and pretty low impact. It's, I'm just going to have a quiet office there and residential above. And like I said before, the only changes would probably be a little painting on the outside and replacing an old fence with a new fence. So in terms of parking, so based on the assessor's card and the town records, the square footage for the first floor is 2,389 square feet. I'm just going to, I'm going to overview how I got, based on the town ordinance, how I got to the number of required parking spaces. That's where I'm starting. So based on the square footage of the first floor, they require one parking space for every 333 square feet. So according to that, based on 2,389 square feet, I'm required to have 7.174 parking spaces, but you go up, so it's actually eight parking spaces based on square footage. And then I'm planning on having two employees, so I need a parking space for each employee, so that brings it to 10. And then the residential unit on the second floor is required to have two spaces, so altogether I'm required to have 12 parking spaces. And I should do a little backtracking where it's, it's an existing building, and it's existed as retail for, since anyone could remember. It was built in the early 1900s, and all it's been is retail. So, sorry, I'm a little scattered. And so anyway, it's requiring 12 parking spaces, and as you could see, the lot is pretty fixed. And, you know, upon first glance, it's hard to figure out how I'm going to get 12 parking spaces in there. So I went through the ordinance to try and figure out how to make this existing lot work within the confines of the current code, which was, I think, amended in 1990. So I've got this building from early 1900s that needs to fit the 1990s code. And so anyway, I need 12 parking spaces. So the first... Let me turn the page. So the first consideration I'd like to propose is the guideline established in Article 19-7-8B4, which states, "The following number, the following minimum number of spaces rounded up to the nearest whole number shall be provided and maintained for each use on a lot, including each use within all buildings. The planning board may reduce by up to 30% the required parking for the reuse of a building existing as of June 4, 1997. In granting such a reduction, the planning board must find that the reduction will not create an aggravated parking problem in the neighborhood, and the required number of spaces cannot be reasonably accommodated on the lot." And in terms of those two requirements, I believe I meet both of them. And so if we reduce the 12 by 30%, we get down to nine parking spaces required. And so going from there, I'd also like the board to consider the guideline established in Article 19-7-8B2, which states, "When multiple use of a lot occurs or where the use involves more than one activity, an ice cream shop or gift shop, off-street parking shop provided for each use in accordance with this section, where the applicant demonstrate and document non-conflicting periods of use." And that's considered shared-use parking. So above, there's the residential, and below, there's a business, and the hours of operation don't meet. So the hours of operation are 8 to 5, Monday through Friday, no weekends, no early mornings, no nights, and the residences of the units would be going to work during that same time period, hence the shared use of the same spaces. So if I use that consideration, let me move on, that would reduce the number of parking spaces down to seven. So we go from 12 to 9 to 7. And I'd also like the board to consider the use of stacked parking, and as you could see in the blueprint above, stacked parking is where you have one space in front of the other, and it just allows for more use of the small area, so I could get four parking spaces in that area. And just to backtrack a little bit in terms of the history, I, I have done a lot of field work trying to get parking off-site, and for that area of Shore Road, there are a few businesses, but parking is a pretty high commodity. I've checked with Terracotta Pasta and Hills Auto and Cape Auto and the Cookie Jar and the building across the street, I don't know who owns it, but, because I couldn't find their name on record, but they had a business name, so I mailed them a couple of letters, and I never heard back. There's a bunch of office buildings, there's an apartment building next door where I don't even think they have enough parking. So I, I've done my field work trying to find anything to accommodate that. So with my seven parking spaces required, which hopefully I've whittled it down to, I would like to have four in the back with the stacked parking. I've got a two-car garage. I'm going to use one of the garage spaces for storage and one for parking, so that's five. And then I've got two spaces on-street, which are located in the South Portland, Town South Portland, which are designated specifically for that retail unit, which was approved by the City of South Portland to be used for that retail unit. So four in the back, one in the garage, two out front, makes seven. And so it, it sounds confusing. I don't know if you guys followed along, I'm not that great at explaining these things. And, and I must stress that I've, I've met the neighbors, and they're all thrilled to have me there, and I'm thrilled to be there, and it's, and it seems like a good fit for the neighborhood and the business district, and, yeah. But obviously, that only covers a small chunk of the whole site plan, so if anyone has any other questions about any of the parts, please feel free to ask.
Thank you. Any questions for Mike on the issue of completeness? Elaine?
Can you, can you point out where on the plan the garage you're talking about is located?
Oh, sure. And stairway, oh, oh, so it's, it's here, it's the back. So there, so there's a line, you can see where the L starts, this line pretty much separates the garage from the main building. And so the two-car garage is right back here.
But your plan doesn't show a parking space in that garage.
It does not.
But your intention is that there should be a five?
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly.
My other question is, can you explain how stacked parking works?
Well, stacked parking works when there are two people that share a unit. Well, stacked parking works when there are two people that share a unit, and they would just need to work jointly, and there's enough turnaround room where they could back up and go out forward, so it would just be two people coordinating comings and goings.
First in, last out. First in, last out.
Right, but do you plan to have any kind of, do you have any kind of written description or understanding of what that stacked parking means? I don't think we have stacked parking in our ordinance, do we? Do we talk about it? Does it describe how it works, or require any agreements?
No, it doesn't require an agreement. It does say you can do it.
You'll see it in restaurants, where they have the staff stacked, you know, blocked by the patrons' parking, because the staff is gonna be leaving until the restaurant closes. Usually informal.
I can't hear you, so I'm sure that no one else in TV land can hear you either.
But it seems to me that we need some understanding as to how, given the unrelated uses here, you would intend that stacked parking to function.
For the unrelated uses?
Well, you've got residential, and then your business use.
Right, well, two spaces, one in front of the other, could be designated for the residential unit. So they would have their own solitary two spaces, one in front of the other, controlling the ingress and egress.
Is that what your plan is? Because you don't have any such designations here.
I just assumed, I just assumed for common sense purposes that joint parties would sort of be in control of each other's cars.
Okay.
Page 249 actually defines stacked parking. This stacked parking may be permitted for resident parking in conjunction with residential uses if both spaces in the stack are assigned to the occupants of the same location.
Okay, but we don't have any such assignment here.
That would probably be part of the lease. When I'd sign a lease agreement, I would designate which spaces that they would be required for each unit.
My concern on the stack is, it also says that non-residential parking cannot be stacked. You can stack your residential, which would be like number one and three, or number two and four, but the ordinance unfortunately says you cannot stack non-residential parking.
I did not know that.
Page 249.
All right.
If no one has any questions, I have some questions about the parking, to make sure that it is complete. So let's say you have some parking here, you haven't noted parking in the garage, that would bring it up to five spots on-site. You said you're trying to make seven. The two others that would be on Shore Road or Cottage Road, however you want to look at it, is off, is not, is not off-site, it's, it would be on-site, it's on the road.
Right, and I went to the workshop, because I was at the board meeting last time, and the parking was an issue, so the goal was to go to the workshop to work out the parking. And I went to the workshop, and we discussed this, everything that I suggested, and the, I guess the implication was that the two spaces that are located in South Portland could be used for this plan.
I did miss that workshop, so my apologies. Is that what the board agreed, that those two spots on the road were going to be used as off-site parking?
I think we agreed that they could be used in the count.
Yeah, acknowledging that it's a bit of a stretch, I think, under the circumstances of this little vest-pocket business district and its antiquity, that, and the fact that these are considered by South Portland, which is where a good deal of the property is, to be allowable parking with respect to the property, we decided it would be okay.
Thank you.
Do we talk about having that shown on our plan? Even if it's shown as two parking spaces and a note that says that, so that in effect our approval is subject to South Portland assigning those two street parking spaces? So I think, I think our plan has to show more than one, two, and three, and four, because to me, it's not complete as it is.
In South Portland, are your parking spaces designated for your business, or are they just designated for a business?
I don't think any street parking anywhere is designated specifically for any business.
So it's designated for business parking?
I think it's more the eyeball test, where if there are two spaces in front of a certain building, you sort of assume that they go with that building, and there are no other businesses right around there.
No, but I mean, I mean, are they designated as business parking?
I'm not sure what would, I don't know, would there be like a sign?
So because you quoted before saying that South Portland says that they're business parking.
South Portland said that I could use those spaces as part of my parking.
Yeah, we have a letter from the Director of Code Enforcement in South Portland, and let me just read this text for both Elaine and Victoria's comments, questions, which are good ones. "Please accept this letter as confirmation that the City of South Portland does permit required parking to be on-street in older buildup areas of the city. The South Portland Ordinance, Section, so forth, states that required off-street parking in all business industrial zones may be substituted by municipal parking facilities, including parking spaces, garages, pardon me, also on-street public parking spaces. Such substitution shall be shown to the representative of the off-street parking turnover or requirements of a particular business and industry in question, and shall take into consideration needs of other businesses with similar demands upon public space." And it goes on. The one thing, Michael, you said that you had a confirmation that these two spaces were applicable to your, and where would that confirmation be found?
Well, I don't think specifically that those two spaces, I just received approval from the Town of South Portland for a change of use from retail to office, and in regards to parking, they assumed that that parking would be part of that unit. And I'd be happy to fetch paperwork, but I'm not sure what paperwork I'm gonna be fetching. Like, well, I don't know if the City of South Portland will say specifically, these two spaces are specific for that unit.
Did they say two spaces, though? Is, I guess, the number two, because I think, it seems to me, we've got two things. One is exactly where the spaces are, which to me seems immaterial, but the other point is that they are spaces that fulfill the parking count, whether they're directly in front of the building, or across the street, or down the street. There are two possible spots for parking. When you go to a store, you don't have to park in front of the store. So I think what we're asking is, is there some communication from South Portland that says we, you are eligible for two spaces on the street?
Chances are no, and reason being, in the City of South Portland, this whole property is incredibly confusing for many reasons, but the City of South Portland, it's listed as residential. In the Town of Cape Elizabeth, it's listed as business, so currently, it's a non-conforming use as retail in the City of South Portland. So I needed to go before the Board of Appeals to make it a non, another non-conforming use as office, so I needed to apply for a miscellaneous appeal. And as part of that miscellaneous appeal, they looked through basically my Cape Elizabeth site plan application to see if everything was on the up and up, and they, they saw that I wasn't making any changes, and so they approved me. So in terms of specifics regarding those two spaces out front, I don't have any, it's just, I assume that they're for that space, and the City of South Portland approves it.
So it's my understanding, though, when you first came up, and I didn't, I wasn't here for the workshop, so, but you're not asking us to switch uses from office, correct? You're asking us to stay as a retail space.
Yes.
It's different than the last time you were here, when you were thinking you wanted to change to office.
No, no, I'm applying for retail, but I'm gonna have an office in there.
So if, Maureen, two more questions I guess for you. If the change, if there's actually no change, if it's going for what was already agreed and plotted in, does this whole discussion about parking spots not apply?
Oh, we wouldn't bring it here if it didn't apply. So, so the long answer is that currently, well, until Mr. Friedland bought the property, the first-floor space has been used as a retail space. Mr. Friedland, and it's been used for a retail space since before we had the requirement for site plan review. So there is no site plan approval for the lot. And Mr. Friedland wants to use it as office space. That is a change of use, and any non-residential change of use triggers site plan review. So, I know, I'll get there. So he needs site plan review, he goes to the BA District, and in the BA District, we organize our approvals by category of use. And he decides, I'm going to apply for the Category 3 village retail use, because that keeps my options open. If I get approval for Category 3, I can operate a retail or an office, I can switch to office. And that's why, just to make it more confusing, he's applying for the Category 3 retail, that's what he should be trying to meet the standards of, and he could still then downgrade to a Category 2 office, as long as he doesn't change the exterior of the building.
And what kind of business are you reviewing?
I have a handyman business, small repairs, and I really bought the building to have a garage space to store things, and the residential unit above covers the mortgage, and I've got this giant office with one desk in it.
So this isn't, I understand with the parking situation, this isn't something that I would imagine there's going to be a lot of customers coming and going there.
There are no customers, we don't even have customers come to us.
So may I possibly try and understand that perhaps the Town of South Portland has calculated the number of parking spaces that they need on average, and they consider that, that, no, I'm getting a note here that says no, so I'll withdraw, withdraw a remark.
I mean, in South Portland, half of the property is in Cape, half is in South Portland. The portion of the property that's in South Portland is zoned residential. And so the retail use that the property, that the first floor was in, was a non-conforming use. And what Mr. Friedland did is he went to South Portland and asked for permission to convert to a less intensive non-conforming use.
That I understand, sure.
So that's a zoning board review.
Yes.
It's not a thorough planning board review with a calculation of parking. It's a very, it's a much less rigorous review than Cape Elizabeth does.
Yes, but what I was saying is, is they sort of said that that sort of business has the ability to use two parking spaces, but unknown.
They did not say that. All they said was, you have, there's, we know there's parking out front on the street, and we're going to give you credit.
For two parking?
No, they did not even give a number, Henry. They just said, there's parking on the street, our policy is that you can count other places for parking, and so we're gonna call it good. And there was a meeting between the Cape Elizabeth Code Enforcement Office, Pat Doucette from the South Portland Code Enforcement Office, Mr. Friedland, the prior owner, the Realtor, myself. So I actually heard these things from the mouth of Pat Doucette in South Portland, and there's also a letter where she confirms these things.
So you can't, we can't name a specific place to target, but we say there's, there's a couple of parking spaces that seem to be applicable to this.
The Cape Elizabeth and South Portland ordinances are different.
Yeah, well, Henry, in Mr. Friedland's defense, let me say that, and I'm familiar with this place because I drive by it a million times a day, these, there's a, there are not marked-out spaces that are numbered and assigned. There is, right in front of the building, space to park two vehicles.
That's fine.
And the building in question is, is, is building right here. And we don't have any formal allocation, and this is a marginal case, I'll grant everybody who's questioning the parking scheme. But at the same time, in this, these particular circumstances, I was inclined to cut as much slack as we could.
Right, that's what I was trying to aim for. To be honest, that was what I.
Back to completeness, if, it is unique that, I've never worked with South Portland's ordinance. So are we making that decision, or did you make it in the workshop, that we're going to, like a hybrid, we're going to apply our ordinances, and we're gonna apply South Portland's ordinances, or are we going to stick to just Cape? Because if we're going to be applying South Portland's ordinances, I don't have any documentation, I watched your meeting online, nobody else here has, so I'm not gonna comment on what I saw. However, they read a very lengthy finding of fact and comments, you have all of that at your disposal, and if we're going to be using South Portland's, what they're finding of facts from your meeting, I think it's only fair that the rest of the board has that in front of them for completeness. So we don't have this argument about, what did South Portland say? Bring us the findings, because there was a finding, a lengthy finding.
Can you elaborate on?
No, there are no decisions made at the workshop, because we don't decide things at the workshop. So this was in a discussion format.
Okay.
And I think the most I could, I could talk about was a sense of the meeting from the people who were there, as to what ought to happen, and I think we did not require that attention to the South Portland ordinance. He had his, you know, that's a different dog, different fight. I think we were taking the point of view that for the part of the real estate that was in Cape Elizabeth, we would apply the parking requirements, or we were inclined to consider applying the parking requirements, including a couple of spaces from the street parking, which is there and has been there forever. And it's simply part of the, that little mini-business district layout. We never asked Mr. Friedland to schlep in all the South Portland stuff.
So anything dealing with South Portland is irrelevant?
I'm not sure it's irrelevant, I'm just not sure it's crucial to our decision, but this is one person's thing.
That's what I'm confused, I'm like, if South Portland's zoning, or their ZBA decision is important, that should be in front of us. If it's relevant to parking, if we're saying we're just gonna go with this Cape Elizabeth ordinance, then it's not relevant, and that's where I'm confused. Caroline, explain this to me.
I just want to say that I think the consensus, there was no decision made at the, at the workshop, but the consensus was, I believe, that allotting, allowing him to count the possibility of two cars parked on the street was a reasonable and common sense approach to deal with a building that is approaching 100 years old, and does not have the capacity to, or the space on-site to park the cars that he needs, but there is sufficient on-street parking to provide for this business.
Very well said. I agree with you.
And with, you know, knowing that South Portland has their own world, and we, you know, he's gonna deal with both worlds. But that was, that was my understanding of the workshop.
And mine.
Anything more on, discussion-wise, on parking?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go way back to where I think Elaine was going on completeness, and that was, wasn't so much, I could be wrong, disputing that the on-street parking, but the fact that there was no designation on the plan to show, you got 1, 2, 3, 4 shown, but there's no designation to show where the fifth space is, and even though you can't mark them as your own, 6 and 7, to show that on the plan, I've found seven spaces that will fulfill my needs. Not, not whether it was okay to park on the street or not, but the fact that the plan did not, not show that. And it's a matter of writing numbers on the plan to show where he intends to put these other cars.
Number five would be in the garage bay, and six and seven would sort of be, you know.
Yeah, it's really a drafting issue, conceptual issue.
Sure, and we could make that a condition of the, well, or.
Wouldn't it be better just to come up with a, I thought it was a downline, wouldn't it be better just to come up with a square footage required to park that number of cars, and they define the best pattern? I mean.
Well, Elaine, your point is you would like a plan to reflect the criteria.
Yes, because if I look at this plan now, it looks like we have made, we have approved and therefore made conforming a situation that only provides four parking spaces, has stacked.
stacked parking for non-residential uses, and it just clearly doesn't comply with our ordinances. So maybe we can get around the stacked parking for non-residential use. But I think at least, we need to be able to visibly indicate on the plan that there's a basis for our finding seven parking spaces, even if we put six and seven sort of dotted in on the street and say, "Per South Portland regulation, street parking can be counted towards satisfying the parking requirement." Some, something, I'm not comfortable with it, but that's not a complete...
Do you think that this could be considered complete, and Maureen worked with the applicant to get all this information onto the drawing? Or do you think we need to send him back?
Well, I think we've had oral testimony that fills in the completeness gaps, so I suppose so. But compliance is another question entirely, and we haven't gotten to that one yet.
Maybe we should insist he had smart cars.
Caroline.
One of the options, one of the options with parking has always been, and he has made effort to have park, you can designate parking in other, on other people's property with their permission. Why couldn't the street parking be looked at as off-site parking? You know, I don't know why we need to say, "Per South Portland," or anything else. It's a street in front of the building with parking spaces.
Yeah, Maureen.
Because the ordinance says you need to show you have some control over it.
Okay.
And in the past, your minimal control was a three-year lease letter-type agreement, which I don't think he'll ever get.
No, I mean, he hasn't been able to, so, he's tried. But, I mean, we can, we can make, we can deem this complete, and if we want to go on and vote on the, whether it's approved or not approved, we could make a condition of approval that the plan must be updated to show where the parking is going to be.
Yeah, I would certainly be in favor of deeming complete, because we have the information. It may not be arrayed before us like we'd really like to have it, but I think we can make that a condition of the approval process. Victoria.
Before we deem it complete, I did have another item, but I want to make sure everyone's done with parking.
Go ahead.
Okay. My question has to do with lighting. Also, I want to make sure this is complete. I got your package, and you've got a lighting schedule here, and you've got a lighting schedule here. They're different. My question to you is, which lighting schedule are you going with?
You got two lighting schedules?
That one, which has seven lights, and this one, which has five. I just want to make sure...
It's the one with five. I don't know, I'm not sure why, maybe the printer...
Okay, the one with five, then, does not show the front porch light. Are you going to remove that light or not? Are you going to screw the light bulbs out?
The front porch light?
Yeah, let me show you the picture. It's part of your presentation.
That's being removed.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, then...
Right, that serves no purpose.
Yes, this one is correct. Okay.
All right, sorry about that.
And for the record, then, now I know which one. I just wanted to clarify that, because it was confusing for me, and now I find that the lighting is more complete. Thank you.
Is it like that, if Maureen said, "What kind of exterior change will it..."
Maureen?
I'm asking Maureen a question.
Does it hang down so you can see it, or is it recessed in the ceiling?
No, it hangs down.
Well, it's, it is an exterior change, but the exterior change becomes important when you're, when you're transitioning from one use to another, and you want to avoid site plan approval. So he can make an exterior change as part of the site plan approval. But then, you know, it needs to be included now, because then if he's, you know, goes ahead and recovers it with some other kind of siding, then there's a problem.
Can I ask a question? In Cape Elizabeth's ordinance, would more parking be required for office use or retail use?
Depends on how you calculate it. And the applicant and I have discussed this at length. I have advised him to calculate his parking based on the use that he is asking approval for. So if he's asking for category three retail use, that's how the parking should be calculated.
I understand that, but I'm concerned with if, in fact, this were later then changed back to retail use, where parking requirements in Cape Elizabeth are more intense. I guess I'm wondering whether it's appropriate for us to grant a more, if the applicant's actual use could be met with office use approval, and if office use requires fewer parking spaces, then we might be keeping closer to our ordinance requirement by going with an office approval.
And to answer your question, the calculation that the applicant provided you was the calculation for retail use. So he's asking for category three approval, that's what he's proposed, that's the one that says, "Three spaces per 1,000 square feet plus one space per employee." So that, that he has calculated based on the category of approval.
Right. So my question is, were the application for the actual intended use? Because my understanding is the reason South Portland went forward is, from their perspective, it's going from a more intensive to a less intensive use. And I would be more inclined to be more flexible if we're approving something that's actually going to happen, particularly if it's less intensive and therefore needs less parking calculation.
It's about, first of all, the, the other thing that I didn't mention, because it just makes things more confusing, is if the, the approval granted by South Portland has a time limit on it, he can go back to the original retail use within one year.
It's a two-year.
Within two years. And that's the other reason he was seeking the retail approval from the town of Cape Elizabeth, because he's trying to preserve that grandfathered use while still using the property as he sees fit. I'm not saying that's a good or a bad thing, that's what this applicant is trying to do. So with retail sales, you're required three spaces per thousand, but you also have to provide parking for employees. With office space, you're required to have four spaces per thousand, but it doesn't have any provision for employees. So you could argue that it kind of comes out in the wash. But the ordinance, I mean, when the town adopted this category approval approach, I mean, the intent was to allow property owners and business owners to be able to move within those categories without coming back to the planning board unless they were making exterior changes. There wasn't a trigger that said, "Oh, you know, if you go from a restaurant to an office, you have to recalculate the parking." Generally, if you look at the, how the uses progress, as you get into larger number categories, there is more demands on parking, on traffic, so that it, it makes sense to have a more intensive review. You move into the lower numbers, those uses generally tend to be less intensive.
Which is more intensive, retail or office?
They're, they're the same. They're almost exactly the same.
Was there an outcome to that question?
On the issue of completeness, probably not. No. If we're still talking about completeness, I think we have enough in front of us.
Well, the, the sense of the meeting conversation on the floor, I think, is that if we were to determine completeness, we could make your point on the adjustments to the plan a condition of the approval.
Right.
And the question is, do we need, do we, is there information that we don't have or that we're not comfortable the level of having it that would keep us from finding completeness?
From actually going to approval tonight?
Yes.
That's, I don't think we've gotten to that question yet.
No, that's right.
I would make a motion for completeness.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion?
Be it ordered that based...
Hold it.
He's going to read.
Oh, okay, good.
Be it ordered that based on the plan, materials submitted, and the facts presented, the application might of Friedland for site plan review of a change of use of 2,000,000 square feet to village retail for the property located at 535 Shore Road, be deemed...
Is there a second to the motion made and seconded? Any discussion on the motion? If there is no further discussion, we'll call for a vote. All in favor? Opposed? One? Okay. The motion carries, six to one. Okay, the approval is the next item, and in the memorandum, we have a couple of things that would supplement these three numbered points. Thank you. The, excuse me, the, the public will now have an opportunity to speak, ask questions. There being no takers on that one, we'll close the public comment on the subject of Moving on to a discussion on approval and, might as well have a public comment for approval, sorry.
No, you're, you're good.
We're good.
I mean, technically, you should have had a public comment period on the completeness, but I'm pretty sure the only person sitting out here is not interested in making a comment, so, and then you did have an official public hearing.
John is probably praying we'll get to his thing before the midnight.
I believe if the board wanted to move towards a consideration of an approval motion, it would be ripe.
Okay. But let the record show that we did have a public comment, and if anybody would like to speak publicly on the issue of completeness, we will reconsider the motion. There being none, we'll now talk about approval. Victoria.
I have questions, as always. I am a little concerned that your surveyor, Spurwink Surveying, did not put any square footage for this footprint, and that we're going off of what I'm sure is very accurate, the card kept up in the planning department. I would feel more comfortable if a surveyor with their stamp actually said, "This is the square footage," instead of relying on the card from, I don't know, 1910. So it's just a comment, I would like to see, the square footage of the building.
All right.
Put on to that. Let's see. Oh, on your lighting, light number five, which is out where the porch is, there's no foot candles, or I can't see the candles associated with light number five.
The front one?
Yep.
No, um...
So I'd like to see the foot candles on number five.
Okay.
Just want to see that that's in compliance with our ordinance. I do, I think the discussion did include that renumbering. I agree with that point. I would like to see the garage dedicated. I know you bought it for storage. I want to make sure if you're going to use it for parking...
Well, it's a two-car garage.
Right, it's two-car. I want to, I don't know how much you have to store, if you're like me, I could fill that in the rest of the building. But I want to make sure it's dedicated, and that you actually put a number on there, and put that information right on this plan. Now, in your key, your key doesn't show fencing. I would like the legend just to show what the fencing is. And then, maybe a little, I know you showed a picture, but maybe a description. We normally go with something that describes the fence, height, things like that. Maureen can help with that, just to describe what the fencing...
So just a written description of the fence? Is that what you're looking for?
Whatever the manufacturing information is, like the height, the material, the color, just your basic, you know, when the code enforcement officer goes out, and you say you're going to put in a fence, you put in the fence that it's on this plan.
Sure.
Let's see. I think that was it, as far as some of the items I wanted to see on the plan. I'd, you know, open to the boards, you know...
I think we merge your points with Elaine's, and we'll have a condition. Is that satisfactory to you, or do you want to see this before we...
Those are some of the items I would like to see. If the board has other comments about that, and they don't want to see it, I mean, I'm certainly open to anything, but those would be my comments that I would like to see on the board.
Any comments, discussion down here in, Joe?
I think it's a reasonable request. I don't, I think it could be conditions of approval. I don't think I'd need to see the stockade fence drawing before, beforehand.
Yeah, I follow Joe's point of view. Caroline?
Good job.
Elaine?
Yeah, I think it's a point of approval. I don't know how you can approve it before it's done, so, if you see what I mean.
It's conditions of approval, right.
Yeah, but I mean, there's a motion for approval, so I don't see how you can grant that before the others are done, because it says, "Be approved." So I mean, it would be a condition of approval.
Subject to all conditions.
Subject, okay.
You know, one is the finding we have to make for the 30% reduction, which is to the effect that the, will create or aggravate parking problems in the neighborhood, and that the required number of spaces can't be reasonably accommodated in the lot. And then number two is, Victoria and Elaine's points merged, is that a fair way to describe it? That the plan be amended to reflect...
Go ahead, Elaine, you're a better wordsmith than I.
They want the parking spaces on the site labeled, and they want an area where parking is available in the vicinity of the, of the business on-street, also identified on the plan.
I think you could just show two, I mean, you got 40 feet.
Yeah.
You could show two 20-foot spaces dashed in, and just say, "Two spaces on the street."
Right, right there.
Leave it at that.
Okay. Victoria, what else did you have besides, you had the square footage?
Please add the square footage of the building on to the plan.
But I think on the dashed-in spaces, I think we need to make a reference to the South Portland ordinance that allows those to be included. So it's clear why, in this case, we're including street parking, where in other cases, we don't. The other thing I continue to be concerned about is how are we getting around the limitation of stacked parking to residential use only? Maureen?
My recommendation would be to assume there are three on-street parking spaces that will be available instead of two. Because he's got two stacked parking spaces, he's got one residential unit, so he can use two stacked spaces. He can use one row of stacked spaces. So for example, you want to just tap that?
Are all four considered stacked?
No, no, only the...
Inner spaces are considered stacked.
So you could count space one and two as, as assigned to the dwelling unit. And then you can count space three, because there's, you can leave without it. You delete space four, remove space four out into the street, you have space five in the garage, and then you have four, six, and seven on the street.
But the stacks have to be in the same residential unit, so one and...
Right, and he only has one residential unit, so...
So one and three would be the stack.
One and three, yes.
Would be the stacked unit, yeah.
So those spaces have to be designated on the plan as residential?
Or you could include it as a condition of approval. But what you would need to do, I mean, you're asking him to make changes to the, the representation of parking on the plan anyway. What you would need to do is you would need to remove either space three or space four. three or space four.
I'm, I'm just wondering why we have to remove them if we don't just designate the two interior spaces as the-
Just the one and three are stacked. Would that do?
One, you can't, you can only stack spaces when the interior, when the stacked space and the space that's blocking the stacked space are assigned to the same dwelling unit.
Ah.
Okay, so, and then since there's only one unit, you can really only have one, one quote-unquote stacked space, and then one space that blocks the stacked space.
That being the case, you're saying assume three, on-street parking?
Yes.
Is that accurate?
Again, South Portland does not require a specific number of spaces. They, in their approval, I think this is in the book, please accept this letter's confirmation that the City of South Portland does, does permit required parking to be on-street in older, built-up areas of the city. South Portland Ordinance Section states that required off-street parking in all business and industrial zones may be substituted by municipal parking facilities, public parking lots and garages, and on-street parking spaces. And the appearance here, and I didn't watch the meeting, is that because you can count on-street parking spaces, the effort to actually decide that there's enough spaces for your property isn't serious unless you're in an area that's congested, and that area always seems to have plenty of space for people to park on the street.
Maureen, one question also.
Yes.
The space directly in front of this property is actually in the City of South Portland, correct?
Correct.
So, I think that's a unique thing that should go on the record for this particular piece of property, is that we're actually approving parking that is in the City of South Portland as opposed to in the town.
Where, what you would be doing is giving a credit for three spaces to be located somewhere on the streets of South Portland.
And one of the reasons I wanted to make sure that's on the record is because this is a unique situation. You could have a piece of property that is literally split down the middle between the town of Cape Elizabeth and the City of South Portland. So, in the future, if a person coming before this board didn't have that sort of situation and was asking for town approval of on-street parking, the reason that this sort of happened here, in my view, is because the City of South Portland has approved it since it's parking in front of this property.
And the property is half in South Portland?
Yes, the back half is in Cape Elizabeth, the front half is in the City of South Portland.
Who's got the word for all these conditions?
In my head, I got them.
While Maureen maybe gathers those together, I do have a final comment, and, and this is just my opinion, but you asked to go from nine spots to seven by asking us to reduce two of the spots due to shared parking, because you said the hours that you'll be operating eight to five are not the same hours that somebody would be home. So, you're asking us to go from nine to seven based on the concept of shared parking, and I do, I'm a little troubled by that. To say that somebody during Monday through Friday will always be gone before eight and will never be home before five doesn't include sick days, vacation days, and it's a huge assumption.
Right.
I personally have a problem with reducing it from nine to seven based on the shared parking concept, and I just wanted to put that out there because it is bothering me, and I'm probably the only one, but I still, in my eyes, it looks like you need nine spots because I don't agree with that, but if the rest of the board, you know, wants to go with the shared parking concept, then it would be seven. So, I just want to put that into the record.
All right, I, I mean, I'm trying my hardest to get this existing lot within the, the rules of the laws to fit. I mean, option B would be having a vacant building that doesn't meet the parking standards.
Well, it wouldn't be vacant. You have a beautiful multiplex on the top during a hot market, and you have a great retail space on the bottom, so I, I don't want you to leave here thinking that you have no choices, but I'm not gonna argue that point with you. I just, these are my-
No, I understand that, so the-
But it's not gonna be an empty building because it does have a use.
Right, so option B would be sort of withdraw the application and just keep it retail, because in that case, I don't need to do any application, because it would be grandfathered as retail. Is that what you were saying?
I'm not insinuating, saying I made the comment that I'm having a hard time going from nine to seven, but when you made the comment that this building now is useless, I can't let that pass.
If it can't meet the parking-
You come before us asking for a certain thing. I'm not giving you options or telling you what to do. I'm just having a concern about going from nine to seven and that the parking is not quite stacking up in my mind, but I'm certain I'm the only one here that may think that. The rest of the board will probably go ahead, so you'll be fine.
And, you know, Victoria makes a fair point, but the other side of that one is that in the concept of shared parking, there is always slippage, at least theoretical slippage, where, you know, you have, you know, the retail hours and the home hours, you have somebody might be homesick, and it may not be a precise mechanical perfect sharing, but over time, overall, it usually works out reasonably well. I think that is what lies behind the theory. And in these, in this particular circum, I keep coming back to this particular, you know, old, little, tiny, commercial area that's been there forever, and my personal feeling is it would be in the best interest of the town to try to make the property viable for somebody who really wants to do something with it, and that we're not jeopardizing serious town values by creating a little bit of slack. This would not, I would not regard this as a precedent for, you know, site plan approvals in general across the board. Maureen, you're laboring vigorously on a condition?
Can you talk for two more minutes?
Okay. Any other items that people would like to discuss or ask Michael about, or disagree on, or whatever?
Got my pillow restered, I'm going to.
Yeah. It's too bad we can't multitask and start John's application. Let's suspend it while we finish this one.
I think I have it.
Could you read it, read it to us?
Well, I'm gonna, who, who's gonna make the motion?
I'll make it.
Joe will make it.
So, I would suggest that you add this as a finding.
Okay.
Okay, and that these are two draft conditions that you add to whatever's already there. So, you're gonna go to the second page. So, we'll have a, we'll just add this as finding number three.
Okay, motion for approval. One, Michael Freeland is requesting site plan review of the change of use to 2,389 square feet of Village Retail located at 535 Shore Road, which requires review under section 19-9 Site Plan Regulations. Two, the property is developed, a two-story building and parking area, and no exterior construction is proposed. Three, the planning board finds that a reduction of 30 percent in the required parking is appropriate because it will not create or aggravate parking in the neighborhood, and the required number of spaces cannot be reasonably accommodated on the lot. Four, the application substantially complies with section 19-9 Site Plan Regulations. Do I get a second yet, or do I?
You've got a little more to go.
Therefore, be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of Michael Freeland for site plan review of a change of use of 2,389 square feet to Village Retail for the property located at 535 Shore Road be approved.
With the following conditions?
With, oh, sorry, with the following conditions. One, that the site plan be revised to label each parking space, including the space in the garage. There shall be only one stacked parking space, an area that can accommodate three on-street parking spaces. On-street in South Portland shall also be delineated, and a note shall be added to the plan describing South Portland's on-street parking provisions. Condition two, that the square foot of, that the, the area of the first-floor building be shown on the first, on the plan.
Jonathan, you had a-
Yeah, I would make an amendment or add a, I believe, finding back that the property of 535 Shore Road is partly in, in the town of Cape Elizabeth and the City of South Portland. Making this a unique property.
Could I add about having the foot candles for lighting fixture number five be added to as a condition of approval?
Yep.
Is that acceptable?
Joe, is that okay with in?
Yeah, yes.
And the other thing was the key, the fencing on the plan.
So, after finding number four, finding number five-
That's a condition.
No, Jonathan's-
Jonathan is, is gonna be the new finding number four?
No, number five, yes, four, and then five would be the application substantially comprised. So, finding four.
And that may also add to the conditions of approval that information on the proposed fence be added to the plan.
Okay, so let's make the fence three.
Victoria, what information did you have in mind? I'm sorry, I was confused on that.
Height and materials.
The applicant shall submit materials depicting-
This would be a note on the plans.
The stockade fence.
And in the legend, the fence be added?
I don't know, I don't agree. It's clearly called out right here, stockade-
Stockade fence to be replaced.
Okay.
If you said eight-foot wood.
Oh, you're covered. Stockade fence to be replaced, and then he's gonna submit.
Are we good on the verbiage?
So, condition three is the stockade fence. Condition four is-
Foot candles?
The photometric for light fixture five shall be submitted.
Okay, we now have a motion-
I'll second.
Second by Caroline. We have a, an except, a second of motion. Any further discussion on that motion? All in favor, opposed? Six in favor, oop, I'm sorry, six, five in favor, two opposed. The motion carries. What else, Mike? I believe, you, you got the lingo for the-
Well, I'll get it back.
With, with, with-
Yes, good. Can you grab pages I gave Joe?
Joe, you have those pages?
Yes.
These?
Okay, our next order of business, with a thundering applause, a thanks to John Green for being so patient.
No problem.
Wentworth Lodge Special Event Facility Site Plan. Sprague Corporation is requesting a site plan review of a special event facility located at Wentworth Lodge, 10 Winters Lane. The application will be reviewed for compliance of section 19-9 Site Plan Regulations and section 19-8-15 Special Event Facility Standards. The procedure will be the planning board will have the applicant introduce the project. The board will allow for a public comment regarding completeness. The board will then make a finding on completeness, either that it is complete or is, that it is not. The board can consider whether a site walk or, and/or a public hearing should be scheduled, and at the close of the discussion, the board has the option to table, approve, approve with conditions, or deny the application. There we go. John, would you identify yourself and introduce the project, please?
Yes, my name is John Green, property manager for Sprague Corporation. Pleased to submit our site plan review for the Wentworth Lodge Special Event Facility located at 10 Winters Lane and comprising four lots, contiguous lots comprising almost 19 acres. We have submitted the site plan itself and documentation covering the approval standards and the 16 items also located in site plan review. So, however you would like to.
Excuse me, do you want to kind of walk them through the-
Yes, we can do that. On the plan you have in front of you, we have the four contiguous lots comprising the overlay district that was recently created. We have included a parking design, as you can see in the plan here. We also have a proposed area where the tent will be located. We have entryways on the Winters Lane and egress on Old Proprietary Road, all private roads. We have porta potty locations, two different locations, depending upon giving the brides some flexibility, depending on where they want to put things. So, we have provided, we were required to put 76 parking places in, but we upped it to 80 just to round it up based on the number of attendees. But all that will be, we can cover if we would like to go through some of the submission requirements, and if there's any other comments that you would like me to cover, I suppose we'll go through each of these individually.
Well, you can do the overview as much as you want.
Well, we can actually go through the site plan items if you like quickly here, if you prefer. I submitted the report here covering each of the items, including obviously the evidence of right title and interest. We included the deed, which is sort of extensive considering the amount of property involved here. Key map of the site is included on the plan itself. The name, address of Sprague Corporation as owner, the abutters. We only have two abutters on the adjacent two lots owned by the same owner, and that is Joshua Zachary and Elizabeth Sprague. They own both lots. That is the granddaughter of Mrs. Sprague who holds the events here, and we've also included a letter of their support. The plan includes lot line dimensions, location of all the buildings and structures on the property. The parking areas included. We have the building setbacks, our sideline and rear yard distance. We set that as the edge of the overlay district. Since it is composed of four lots, we, we could not apply that standard to just each lot, otherwise we wouldn't have a area to hold the event. So, we, we put the sideline as 30-foot setback on the side, and I think it was a 40-foot setback along Lower River Road, a private road on the, on the perimeter of the overlay district. All the existing features on the site are included. The bulk of what is shown in here is from our 1999 land use plan that was approved by the planning board previously, including the RP2 wetland off to the one side here. by the planning board previously, including the RP2 wetland off to the one side here. And a 25-foot buffer was placed on that, small wet area there. Topography is two-foot contours as shown on the plan. And as said previously, the parking area, 76 spaces required per the ordinance, and that's based on 25 employees and 250 guests as sort of a maximum number. 13 spaces for employees, 63 spaces for the guests, totaling 76 spaces. As far as improvements, there'll be no improvements to the site, this is all sort of a temporary facility, you know, a tent, generator, et cetera, all removed from the site when the event is over. No proposed increase in impervious surface will result in no stormwater flow, no stormwater management will be necessary, as the site is a hayfield with a, quite a bit of pervious surface, orchard grass. Sanitary district will be accommodated with portable toilets, and the standard of the industry is one toilet per 50 guests. Water supply is bottled, and solid waste will be collected from the event and removed by the caterer. Landscaping, there is no proposed landscaping, the site is going to be left in its natural state. There is plenty of sort of natural buffering by existing shrubs, trees, et cetera. Lighting, the lighting is basically going to only be the lighting in the tent, and the standard, or the typical lighting in the tent is usually 100-watt bulbs, and I can cover the foot candles a little later here. Signs, the only signs will be the Wentworth Lodge sign at the intersection of Charles Jordan Road and Little Pond Lane at the entrance here off Charles Jordan Road. There also were two roads, road signs that are town signs that were put in recently, Lower River Road and Old Proprietary here, those, that road sign also exists. Signs for the event itself are generally, people put up balloons along, along our road or, or driftwood signs or any other number of signs for the event, and they're taken down immediately afterward. A letter from town manager has been provided for financial and technical capability. And if you'd like, I can go right quickly through the approval standards if you prefer.
Sure.
All right. Our site has typically been used for weddings in the past, people rent the cottage, and while they're renting the cottage, you have the opportunity to also, if they so desire, have a wedding for one of their family members. All sensitive areas have been preserved, it's an active hayfield, so the wetland is, has not been disturbed in all these activities, and we indeed hay around this site nearly part of the season before any weddings occur anyway. Traffic access and parking, as you saw in this application, we have a letter from Andrew Morale dealing with the 100 or more peak hour requirement, and we do not rise to that level, so we will not need to have a traffic study done, and I think that was reconfirmed by the town engineer in his letter. Pedestrian circulation, there's just a couple of items here and in the middle and on the end of the parking design, sort of what we expect for traffic flow. There'll be parking attendants directing traffic and sort of ushering people in the correct direction for that, and in the history of some of the events we've had on the property seems to work well. The primary one being the beach-to-beacon with 800 cars being parked, and they seem to do quite a good job with parking and attendance at that event. So stormwater management, I mentioned earlier. Erosion control, since there'll be no disturbance of the soils, there'd be no requirement for erosion control. Water supply will be bottled, sewage disposal will be completely handled by the portable toilet company. Utilities, the only utility expected is the generator, and I've provided a spec sheet, I believe it was 60-some decibels, 23 feet from the generator. The closest abutting property is 185 feet, so the diminished decibel level at the property line would be well below that threshold. No activity that affects water quality, solid waste removed by the catering company. The proposed event activity will not adversely affect the shoreline. We did include the new shoreland zone line from the new elevation that was set, we kept the tent area and every other part of the event outside that shoreland zone. We have the technical and financial capability, as mentioned, that was provided to the town manager. The exterior lighting, again, a 60-watt bulb generates at 150 feet away, .04 foot candles or even less, I imagine, but we used a metric with a sample in, in this application to show that even at 20 feet high, it's 175-watt bulb, 20 feet away, also does not have the point, has less than .5-foot candles at that distance. So what we're trying to say with that metric is that at 185 feet away, we have hardly a possibility of even coming anywhere close with the .5-foot candles. Landscaping and buffering, I mentioned, was not going to be added, as it's just a natural area, and noise, again, will be kept to 55 decibels or below by 10:00 PM, and sound levels at 7:00 AM are 45 decibels or lower, although I don't believe any party will last that long. And storage of materials, there will be no storage of materials other than catering items, and those will be removed by the catering company the next day. So that's more or less what I have, and there's some additional documents in the report if you have other questions.
Could we hear from what sort of the number of events, the number of attendees, what type of events specifically goes into the special events?
Yes, we, we're basically asking for the maximum, which I believe was a 12 events, and there was discussion that an event would also include perhaps the night before having, as we discussed at workshop, the, if there was a, what am I trying to say, the rehearsal dinner, and that would be considered an event, and then the next day, the wedding itself would be considered an event. So I would have to say that it seems as if there generally would be six events a year if that were the case, unless they held their rehearsal dinner at a restaurant, for example, then that would allow us to approach the 12 perhaps. This here is an example of, I believe the first wedding we have is a friend of the family, and that is not going to be a business wedding, you know, part of this program, and the wedding after that would be, so I'm only anticipating probably two, two weddings this fall, and we're just trying to get through this process. You know, this is a sort of, some years more weddings than others, but we wanted to go for the maximum just in case in a odd year we had the opportunity to hold that many weddings.
Just looking at submission checklist.
What was that, the...
Look into the...
Submission checklist.
Oh, okay, let me find that here again. Let me go through that, I'm sorry. All right, what number were you at here on this checklist?
Describe, you said the maximum, the number of attendees, and it's not clear if anything is proposed in that.
I believe that in my report here, the time period, the time of year, timing of year?
Yes.
I believe that I put in there, and I don't have the time really to look it up, I believe it was June through November, perhaps?
July to October.
July, right, there you go. Sorry. Thank you.
You proposed the maximum.
The maximum, yes, we figured if we're...
Correct.
And that, the 275 would include the staff as well, and hence the parking was related to that 25, 250 is a sort of large event where there would be more staff than normal.
One other question, you said that there was already a Wentworth Lodge sign?
Yes.
But that's not gonna change?
No, that stays as it is, and like I said, they, people generally put up some other indicator balloons or otherwise to direct people from down Charles Jordan Road to that location. And, and since we have held many other weddings and/or events at these locations, it's, you know, it seems to work quite well.
Before, John, I am gonna note for the record, the public has an opportunity to comment, there being no members of the public here will open and close the public comment period. Anything further for John on the...
I guess, just looking at the, sorry, I'm just looking at the music. Do you intend to have live music, or is it just DJed by music?
It varies, we have had small bands, we have not had, I guess in one wedding years ago, they had a fairly substantial band, but generally they're, they're smaller bands and DJs.
So what sort of decibel levels are you expecting out on the perimeter?
I suppose I, I would have to supply that information, I do not know, I'd have to...
Because I would've thought that jazz band might've been a bit loud, if you know what I mean.
You're correct, I, I suppose if someone likes their old rock and roll, that I will need to provide that information, I am not sure what decibel level that would...
I don't know whether we've got a new noise level ordinance or whatever that would be.
This project has to get site plan review, and our handy-dandy noise standard at 45 and 55 decibels at the property line would apply.
Correct, and we intend to meet that, as obviously the ordinance states that, and I believe it's 10:00 PM, the decibel level drops to 55, I think it was. So I suppose at that rate, we would have to shut the band down at that time, although the two abutters we have are all in favor of us doing that, it's the granddaughter of Mrs. Sprague, and our next nearest abutter is probably half a mile away.
The only reason I say that is because it's a tent, and therefore its soundproofing is not as good as a building.
That's correct.
That's why we had the 15-acre requirement to create a lot of...
Sure.
...landmass over which the sound...
But, but trumpets and stuff still carry slight resistance.
Victoria.
Do you ever have more than one generator being used at a time?
I have never seen that yet, I mean, these generators are very large, they're trailer generators with multiple outlets and can supply electricity to more than a house, it's, that's how big they are, and they're whisper quiet generators.
I actually have some other questions in regards to their survey that was conducted. I was just wondering, how did you identify the 75-foot shoreland setback and the 250-foot shoreland overlay districts? How was that done?
That was done according to the new standard that was set by the town, I believe it is, off the top of my head, I'm, I think I asked Maureen, I went up and talked to her about it again, but nine point...
Yeah, it's, it's the normal high-water line plus three verticals.
Right, correct, and I think I state, actually state that in the...
Well, actually, when I look at this, this is what, this is what I find confusing. On your plat, you say you use the 75-foot shoreland setback from the mean high-water mark. Now, we don't use mean anymore.
Yes, all right, that is a typo that can be replaced because that is incorrect.
Okay.
It's in the high-stational type, plus three.
Who did this work? Who did this work?
It was Sebago, I'm sorry, PH2M.
They did...
And elevation 9.6 NAV, but the, I think you're correct, and, and some of that wording is confusing, that is not...
Well, what I also find confusing about the shoreland is the, your disqualifier of the approximate, I gotta say, I've never seen anyone disquali-...
I, I, yes.
And then, once again, you use mean high-water mark, so a second time you've used the wrong, I'm gonna have to say you, because the engineers didn't show up, so my apologies.
No, 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 I don't mind, no, that's, that's a good catch, because technically I did meet with Maureen and came up with that language, and it was missed at the drafting here.
It should be normal.
Correct.
It shouldn't be mean, and my other, very curious, is on that one where it says C note number 10. If you see note number 10, it says, "This was developed from an aerial photographic methods flown on April in 1997," and it's based on this, so you're saying that this 250-foot shoreland performance overlay district was done from an airplane that flew over in 1997?
That, that was for the two-foot contouring. I think also the, this note, number 10, was part of our 99 land use plan, that's how the two-foot contouring was developed, I believe, and the shoreland, the shoreland zoning was meant to reflect the 9.6 from those two-foot elevations, so there is some...
I, I find that...
I think we, we...
Very, it's very disconcerting that twice you used the wrong language and that you say C note, you're very specific, C note number 10, and number 10 says, "This was done in 1997."
Right, that was...
And I pulled your, I pulled your old map, because I was very curious, we spent a long time looking at water, high-water marks.
Yes, I know you did, yes.
And I noticed that the 250 mark didn't change in my untrained eye, so that's why I'm kind of getting at, who did the work, when did they do the work? Do you have that on here, on who did the actual surveying?
Yes, I can tell you that I had the old line removed, and I met with Maureen and Ben to, to reconfirm the 9.6 elevation where it was the starting point, and had our firm replace the shoreland line at, at the 9.6. Now, the approximate, I can't speak to that, honestly.
Okay, 'cause on note number two, it says the survey was from the approved Spurwind Corporation, the subdivision.
Yes, correct.
From March of 1999.
That is correct, and that used publicly...
So this survey line, the 250, is from 1999?
You mean the 250-foot, no, no...
And the 75?
No, no, I had those removed from the plan, and then reconfirmed with Maureen and Ben, and told the firm that we used to replace the line from a 9.6 elevation, and I wanted a 75-foot line so that I knew we weren't impinging from that 9.6, 75 feet inland, and had them place a new 250-foot line from that 9.6 elevation.
Okay.
And that, that is how that was developed from me. Now, the note confusion, ten, to be honest, was not meant to be part of the shoreland zone, it was meant for two-foot contours. So I think some rewording on this plan needs to take place, because obviously that is not quite correct.
I'm, I'm just concerned, because twice you use mean, you should be using normal, the note 10, the, the mention of the surveys from 1999. A, a lot of it seems, just if I was to take this, and if, when we say something's complete, then we take the risk that this is it, and...
Yes.
...the applicant may decide not to, because you deemed it complete, make any changes.
Yes, I, I agree.
So I am concerned that there are so many discrepancies with our new ordinance that these folks made.
No, I, I see where you're coming from, that's, nope, that's a good catch, because that was not supposed to come across that way.
Joe?
So I just, just to clarify with Maureen, the 75-foot mark is the line at which the tent area and the parking would have to be outside of, correct?
Right, that's a, that is the...
The 250-foot line is immaterial.
Well, it's only, it is important, because everything in the first 250 feet is under the shoreland zoning overlay district, and so if you want zoning shown on your site plans, which we do...
Right.
You would wanna show that, and there are certain activities that are not allowed in the shoreland zone, and there are things that are regulated, because this activity isn't, for example, it isn't adding impervious surface. There is a restriction on how much impervious surface you can have in the 250-foot area, so it's good to have the line on there, but for this particular... So it's good to have the line on there, but for this particular project, it's not having a lot of impact.
Right. So I'd just like to suggest that the word approximate probably refers to the fact that they offset two hundred and fifty feet from the contour, which is approximate by virtue of how it gets on the-
Right. I think what happened there-
Does she have such tight contouring here?
Sure. That picking nine point six elevation in what amounts to a drop-off there on the shore.
I think Victoria's point was, the plan could be cleaned up in some respects.
Yes, I think so. And we would do that. We, again, would get the exact language from Maureen, which I thought I had done, and put it on there, and make sure those references aren't confusing. If the note number ten refers to contouring, it will reflect that.
Maureen?
I was wondering, I mean, there's actually a lot of good plan references on here, so perhaps we could just add to the plan reference note number eleven, and make a new number six that actually says who did the most recent normal high water line work, and when they did it, and what was their basis. I mean, if you did the work, you should get credit for it.
Right, that's not a problem.
So, I just have one quick question. It's a follow-up on your question. It said that it's aerial photography, but when we came to ask how we worked out the elevations, and it said that the plane would be flying LiDAR, and bouncing the beam so that you can get the accurate contouring. So if this is done by photography, how did the accurate contouring get done?
I would have to talk to our engineering firm. I may very well be wrong on that.
And I'm not sure that in nineteen ninety-seven, they had LiDAR. Maybe they did, but I'm so a little bit confused, following on from your statement there, as to how accurate your overall-
Right.
-plan is.
Right, well, it was based on our nineteen ninety-nine survey, so I can supply that information as to the exact method used.
So would it be in condition? Would we-
Well, we're talking about completeness, don't we?
No, not completeness.
Well, yeah, but I mean, it would be, for completeness, the condition of knowing that it was accurate or not. I mean, just-
I guess that's how we're gonna vote on.
Well, I guess, okay, but. And the other question, sorry, I have one other question. I guess it's Maureen, but if you have a temporary, temporary structure, does it really matter where it is? If it's, you know, a temporary tent, it's gonna, it's gonna be disappeared in a couple of days.
Are you asking me if a temporary structure has to comply with the seventy-five foot setback?
I guess that's what I'm asking.
I think it does, but I can check with the code enforcement officer, what his interpretation of that would be. You know, to be on the safe side, being on this side of seventy-five feet is the more prudent way to manage a natural resource.
Yes, we're happy to, given when these are determined to be correct, we're happy to comply with the seventy-five.
Well, you've shown a location for the tent, and I assume that you would stay within that box.
That was the idea behind creating such a large, or a reasonably large area, so that there's some wiggle room with how the wedding party wants to sort of design their wedding. Gives them a little room to be creative.
So is your ground flat? I'm sorry. Is your ground flat where this proposed catering tent is?
It's a, sort of a long, humping slope of a hayfield, and upward the tents generally go is usually in the same spot, because it's reasonably flat up top. And it slopes slightly in both directions.
So you have, you have flexibility where you put it?
Yes, correct, yeah. And it's, was chosen, because that's traditionally where these tents go, is in this one location.
Victoria?
I just had a couple of things to point out, because it does sound like you will at least be coming back for, possibly, because of the map. The name Sprague is misspelled twice, and I just want to point that out.
Wait, we're really, we're really on top of that. What about on the plot map here?
Note number one. See how it's misspelled?
Oh, yeah, they got a Q instead of a G.
Boy, that's a very tiny catch, yes.
Yeah, and-
Q, it's a Q, apparently.
Yeah, and same thing with just this little box. It looks like it's a Q, not a G. I mean-
Nope.
You're gonna come back and touch the map?
No, no, that's, that's fine.
The name Gorham, Maine, Gorham is misspelled.
Wow.
That's note number three. Note number four, it should say the nineteen ninety-nine, and it says one nine nine. It's just little typos.
I've lagged a little too much on one person there.
And-
My apologies.
Typos happen. I make typos. And I would just ask, would it be possible in note number two? It talks about a survey. It talks about the survey that was approved on March sixteenth. I think what really helps when I'm looking at notes, is that actually, it says something about, "Then it was recorded," and then Cumberland County Registry of Deeds, under Plan Book Page one ninety-nine, three oh three. I know that information is also under eleven, number five, but whenever I see something that's, you know, actually-
Right.
Online, where you can reference it, if that's okay, I'd like to actually have that. It's the same note, it's that one, but-
Move it up to the survey.
Well, you don't have to move it. I mean, it's the same information, but I think it's always good that this is the wetland survey, and this is talking about the subdivision. I know that they're on the same plat, but maybe somebody else doesn't know they're on the same plat.
All right.
So if somebody wants to know about your wetland survey-
Yes.
They know where to go for the-
So we'll just put that reference up on that note as well.
If that's okay with you.
That makes sense to me.
Okay. And just down on your special event facility ordinance amendment, there is something that says you need to describe the type of events that will be held at the facility. It's on page one forty-nine, where, and this is where you came up with, you know, adding all this information. There's also something that says you must add a description of the type. If you could just please add a description onto the, right here, where you have the rest of all the information that needs to go on to the-
You want that on the plan itself, or the-
Yeah, just another note, just below all your others, as you were checking off the twelve events.
I believe I provided that in the report, if I recall, the type of events.
The language is in your application, so you just-
It's in the application, but I was just, is it okay?
Well, the only thing I would say to that is, you know, we wanted it to be as broad as possible, but, you know, I suppose if the note said something to the effect that events typically like weddings or family reunion, but we didn't want to limit ourselves necessarily, because I'm not sure what kind of events are out there.
Unfortunately, on page one forty-nine, it does say that this should be part of the application, and-
I can easily put-
I was just wondering if maybe there's something-
No, not a problem.
And still be very broad, because I'm not trying to cut you off either.
No, we can, we can add that.
And where you said there'd be no more than twelve events held in a calendar year? I think I heard you say, actually, you intend to hold these in, from July to October?
Correct.
I don't know if that level of detail, I mean, if the board has any comments on calendar year is fine, or you want to limit yourself from July to October, or-
Well, generally, since it's a hayfield, we wanted to get our hay cutting, you know, this is sort of a very limited use, so to speak. So it's a hayfield primarily. We do go out there and hay it, and round bale it, and so then we get our cut out of the way, the haze out of the way, and the field's properly cut, and then we have some events. And then if we get a second cut, and there's events in the fall, it's ready to go again.
I can leave that up to you, if you want to leave it as a calendar year, if you want to be more specific. But the rest are just little things that I noticed and picked up.
Yep, some of those are easily done, not a, not a problem.
Okay, thank you very much.
Other comments, questions, other side of the table? Okay. Two other things, I just, the board should think about. One would be a site walk, and one would be a public hearing. Now, do we usually wait until completeness before we do that?
Typically, yeah, you typically don't schedule a public hearing until an application is deemed complete, because the public has access to one public hearing, and they want to be able to-
Okay.
-speak on a complete application, and not have information missing.
So let's just sit in all that until we have the hearing of completeness, which would be at the next regular meeting?
Well, now, if you're going to, let's say, for example, tonight, you're gonna deem this complete, and table it to the next month's meeting for a public hearing. Typically, you hold your site visit before the public hearing.
Right.
So that-
But if we don't deem it complete till the next meeting, then we'll-
No, that's right.
Then we'll think about a site walk after that.
Right.
Charlie?
Have we in the past, or am I remembering some other life, deemed things complete? Where there are some inconsistencies, we want to see changed on the plan, with the understanding that they've taken note on those changes, and that those, that will be coming back when we discuss it. Am I wrong in that?
No. If the board is comfortable that the applicant is completely committed to making these amendments, and that the board feels that they are substantially complete, then you could deem it complete, because completeness isn't adequate. It's two separate, two separate things. But it is, that is your call.
So I'm throwing that out there.
But deem it complete with a laundry list of things you want done?
We've given him a laundry list of things we want done.
It seems to me that most of this stuff is little drafting, and-
True.
Just small things to adjust. It seems like we could deem it complete, and trust that those will-
Deem it complete without specifying the-
I mean, our hold is, if they don't make the changes, we don't approve, we don't approve it. I mean-
True enough.
I would strongly ask you not to grant conditional completeness. You know, things should be complete or not complete. And you can do complete with stern instructions to the applicant that they need to bring these other things back, because they're not so vital that they hold up completeness, but they're certainly vital enough to hold up any future positive action. But I would strongly ask you not to put conditions on a completeness motion.
Okay. And you feel so the board? Go ahead.
If, if this was to come back next month, could we also, if it wasn't found complete, then just the opposite? Could we do a completeness next month and the public hearing next month at the same time?
Sure.
Yes, you could instruct me to advertise both at the same time. If you wanted to do that, I would, and you wanted to hold a site visit, I would suggest you do schedule the site visit tonight.
Thank you.
The, the public hearings, that's something we have to have, but this is the first application in this new section. I would think it'd be, it's appropriate that we have a public hearing.
I have no problem having a public hearing, but I also have no problem deeming this complete tonight. I think the applicant is very forthcoming with the changes that he's making. I think they're all good suggestions to make, but I agree that there are more drafting changes that I think we could deem complete tonight.
If we deem it complete tonight, then we can schedule a public hearing for our next meeting, and we can schedule a site walk.
Yes. And I'd be all for that.
And I'm also a little concerned about if, and I know you're gonna come back. I mean, I don't want to act like I'm disparaging you, but this is very important. It does say mean, it refers to note number ten. I just, I have concerns that I, if you didn't come back, I would deny it. And so I do feel that I have a if then, and I don't feel good about an if then. So I'm not so feeling it to find it complete. So I just want to throw that out, too, another side of it.
Yeah, I find myself in the middle, because I would have a really hard time if we said it was complete, and then expecting these things to be dealt with, and for some reason, John got really ornery, wasn't gonna do it, which I doubt would happen, but I would find it very difficult to say, "Well, heck with you, we're gonna deny the application," because that's, that's not a substantive decision. It's more retaliatory. The nature of the-
I don't find that retaliative.
Of the corrections, though, I find to be fairly minor.
Peter, I disagree with that statement. I think, I think completeness is, have they brought forward information? And have they brought forward the detail that we're looking for? Maybe we don't agree with every little dot on the, on the plan, and to me, that's substantive. That's not necessarily completeness. And if they come back and they don't make the changes that he's indicated they're willing to, to make, then I have no problem with saying no. But I don't see why we need to make this another completeness, and then public hearing, and then, it just seems to jam things up when you get into that. And I think, I think Victoria's brought up excellent points and things that need to be changed, and I'm certain that they will be changed when they come back. And if they're not, I'll vote no. So.
We just have a different point of view on that.
I- I see these as substantive things, and not necessarily, and maybe it's just a different perspective on it.
To me, it's the character of what's lacking, and I find the, the character of what's lacking to be fairly minor. This is, we're not, we're sort of into the minimus territory. There's nothing, if they didn't do it, it would make me feel like I couldn't make a decision on the matter. And I'm also highly confident that the applicant will meet every one of your criteria, particularly correct spelling of the applicant's name.
Yeah.
So anyway.
Someone, let's make a motion and go up or down.
There you go.
How's that?
Make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Ah, where's my motion? Oh, no.
I'll make a motion.
All right, I got it. Motion for the board to consider, be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of the Sprague Corporation for site plan review of the Wentworth Lodge Special Events Facility located at ten Winters Lane be deemed complete.
Second. We have a motion that's been made in second. Is there any further discussion on that motion? We'll call for a vote, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, it passes five to one opposed. We will put you on the book for the next regular meeting.
We need a motion.
Every?
Your staff didn't write you another motion.
You need a motion.
For what?
So, so the next thing, the next thing I'd ask, do you want to schedule a site visit?
Yeah, I, any, I would like to myself. The first, first time out, I think we ought to walk around and check it out.
What do you expect to gain from a walk around?
Seeing the situation, what you get from the site, from the walk.
I'll, I'll just say, unless the site visit is at five thirty PM, I will not be able to attend. So if you are, if you want to have it at any other time, that's fine, I just won't be able to attend.
I actually echo that, because my schedule has changed, and I took a new job that I have to be in, basically at eight o'clock every morning. And this weekend, I'm not available.
Yeah, and, tell us, we have been at five thirty PM, seven days' wait?
What's a good day? Sundays, you could do it at four thirty.
In the morning or the evening?
No, in the evening.
Five thirty evening, this is a good thing for you.
Yes, I would be happy, again.
So, so what would be, what's a time, what's a date, a day you don't care?
I don't care what day. I just work till five every day.
Well, next week, Monday's the twenty-third, Tuesday's the twenty-fourth.
Do Tuesday at work.
How about Tuesday, the twenty-fourth, at five thirty PM?
Is that okay?
Yes, that's perfectly fine.
Other board members, okay with that?
Tuesday, the twenty-fourth, at five.
And I'll send out a reminder.
Five thirty?
Yeah.
At five thirty, Caroline?
Yep.
Five thirty PM?
Want to go in A at a moment?
Right, well, you're gonna have to watch where you step. You'll have to watch where you step.
Is it all right if we park in the, on Winters Lane?
Yes, no problem. I'll greet you there and show you where to park.
Do you need a resolution?
You're gonna put up signs, John?
Table it to the next balloons.
And then what you need is to make a motion to table it to the June twenty-first meeting, at which time a public hearing will be held. And I think you can scavenge the completeness motion to make that work.
Oh, okay, I'll do it. All right. I'll try. Oh, no, I can't do it. You lost me, I lost you.
So where, at the end, where it says be deemed, you say be tabled to the June twenty-first meeting, at which time a public hearing will be held.
Be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted? Or can I leave that phrase out?
No, you just keep going.
Okay. And the facts presented, the application of the Sprague Corporation for site plan review of the Wentworth Lodge Special Event Facility located at ten Winters Lane, be tabled until the June twenty-first, two thousand sixteen, meeting at which time a public hearing will be held.
You'll have a second? Do I have a second? Second. Any discussion on the second motion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So we have a completion, completeness vote, and we have a tabling vote for the public hearing and final decision. John, thank you.
Yep. No, thank you for your comments. We will take that to heart and change those things.
The, the hour being what it is, can we put off the technical amendments for a bit or...
It's certainly, you can do that. The intent was to table them to June 21st where you were gonna have a public hearing. There are, I can do, I have three minor things if you could just give me a direction.
Okay.
But you also would need to have a motion to suspend the rules.
Can you, can you folks dedicate 10 minutes to bringing this up?
He's making, he was making a motion to...
Motion, suspend the rules. Second. In favor? Okay.
Okay. So what you have in front of you are a set of amendments dated May 3rd. There is a summary of all of the changes that have been made. For some reason, I keep leaving out the motions, so you still don't have a motion on here. There were three things that were proposed to be changed. And it is right here. The first thing is the item that we had talked about, about whether the zoning... Can you take one of those and pass one on? What I'm passing out to you is the recommendation from the town attorney. The first item is the zoning board review, whether they do administrative review, administrative appeals review as a de novo review or as an appellate review. And the recommendation and text here is that it be a de novo review. And if you're okay with this language, I would add it to page 13, line 24, and bring it back to you for the June 21st meeting. The second item is the noise standard. And at the last meeting, you had asked me to take a second look at that. So the, I revised the submission requirement, which is on page 25, and I revised the noise standard, which is on page 35. And there was a recommendation from a member of the board to delete the first line of the revised noise standard. That line is on page 35, line 19. And then the third item is a question of the way that you currently describe public hearings for site plan review. And the line says that the applicant shall be prepared to answer questions from the public. And there's a concern that the way it's written sounds like there's going to be a back and forth dialogue between the applicant and the public, which is not the way the process works. So if you agree that that should be revised, I would make the change necessary so it's clear that the applicant needs to answer questions and the public can ask questions, but it's not a back and forth dialogue. Those are the three proposed changes to the package in front of you. And if you tell me to go ahead with those, I'll make revisions. Even if I make the revisions, you can still change them. And I did not draft a motion, but it basically is to table the technical amendments to the June 21st meeting at which time a public hearing can be held.
Should I explain why I wanted to drop that sentence in the noise standard or...
It's up to you.
You guys okay with that? I, I just think it's inapplicable, I mean, to say that it won't increase the noise levels. It depends on what the priorities was or new use.
Mr. Chair, could you lead forward?
I just think we have a, we have a, a metric here with, with the decibel measurements, which to me is the appropriate standard to say it won't increase noise levels or cause human discomfort. I just find standards that you would, could be impossible to, to apply. And I, I think it adds nothing. It could conflict. You could have a, meet the decibel requirement, but somehow be expected to disqualify it. If you went from a vacant lot to any use, it's going to be a substantial increase in noise level. But if you meet the decibel metrics, I'm not sure why you shouldn't be in good shape. So I was, I find that first sentence doesn't add anything. It actually makes it almost impossible to apply.
It's fine. Okay.
So I would like to ask one question, if I may. The decibel, is it, is it a measure of frequency? I mean, it's just sound. So, you know, high frequencies versus low frequencies do have, I mean, low frequencies have a lot of energy behind them and high frequencies have annoyance behind them, if you see what I mean. So, but just quoting decibel, does that necessarily mean noise? You know, that's a technical one, isn't it?
At your direction, I went back and looked at the noise standard again. I did some more research, and I remain very concerned that if you want a very detailed noise standard, then you are going to have to require applicants to provide that information to you. And no one is going to be able to do that without hiring a consultant and expending the money to do that. So, yes, you could look at frequency. You can look at a lot of different things. The decibel A standard that you're using right now, there's like six different decibel type standards, but this one is the one that's related to how human beings perceive sound. So if you're, unless you really want to ramp up the technical level of your standard, this is the one to use. That's my answer. And this is the challenge with all of these standards. You need a clear standard, but if you make the standard too rigorous, you're imposing on applicants a very high level of submission requirement because you can't, you can't approve something if you don't have the information in the record to base your approval on.
So, so does that mean that you take the published decibel level of a device and call it good or bad depending on its level?
It's gonna depend, it's gonna vary from application to application. I mean, right now, you're getting stuff that is given by a manufacturer for generators.
Right.
And, you know, other people are not going to use that. The way I wrote the standard was suggested by you that in fact you could use standardized tables. And, you know, one of the issues we've had in the past is when people have proposed opening a daycare. And, you know, it's a lot of noise, and this would allow an applicant who's trying to open a daycare to use a published table and provide that information to you to approximate their decibel level. So it doesn't require a very technical standard.
Right, right.
It, it might. Depends on what the noise generation is.
I would suggest we stick with the decibel. Sorry? I, I take your point, but I suggest we, we stay with the decibel.
Well, I'm not objecting to, I'm not, I'm not objecting to that. I'm just asking the question that, that might have come out, you know? And people might raise, raise the question, and so they deserve some sort of an answer, which we, which we provide, seem to have provided.
Well, entertain a motion to adjourn. What's for?
That last thing that Maureen, you suggested with regards to the public hearing, did I hear that correct? That there was a change to it or not a change?
I, I would say it is more of a wording change than a process change. The process is not proposed to be changed at all. It says here that the applicant shall be prepared to respond fully to questions from the planning board or issues raised by the public, which the planning board deems significant. There's a concern that the way this is written, it implies that the applicant in the planning and the, and the people at the public hearing are gonna engage in a back and forth dialogue when that is not the way we do things. So I need to just, I need to adjust the wording a little bit to make it clear that the public poses questions and then the applicant provides answers to those questions.
Yes, and I agree with you.
Well, if the board wants the applicant to address it.
Okay, yes.
I think the wording...
Not every...
How does the public, how does the public propose questions?
They speak at the public hearing and they provide you written comments.
Written comments or...
Or they speak at the public hearing or at the public comment period.
And in which case, somebody in this board or a board brings it up? Other, other than that...
Yeah, you could close the public comment period and then the applicant returns to the podium and you could say, could you respond to the questions you just heard?
Fair enough.
I just think that the wording should reflect the process.
Yes, there was no intent to change the process. It was to tighten up the wording.
So we have a motion to take it.
So that's an okay on that one.
Would you like a motion for a public hearing?
I think we had one, didn't we?
No.
Would you provide one?
I'll do my best. I move we table the technical amendments until June 21st, 2016, at which time a public hearing will be held.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Henry. Discussion on the second motion, none. All in favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. Any other comments, thoughts?
Motion, we adjourn.
Okay. Second approved, done.
That one, I don't need Maureen's help wording.
I want to go home.
He finds it a better job with the memo. I'll see if I can get my help.